The October 5th Board of Commissioners meeting is now called to order. I'd like to ask everyone here if you would please join Vice Chair Jerry Langley as he does our invocation, and if you would, Commissioner Ed Bullock will do our pledge. Please stand.
Let us pray. Each time about our Father, we are grateful and thankful that you allow us the privilege to assemble here together one more time to do the business of your people. Father, lead and guide us in our deliberations, God. Let us have the right attitude towards your people, that everything that we say and everything that we do will be pleasing in thy sight. In the matchless name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let it be the delight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're down to item C. Is there any Commissioner who wishes disclosure regarding any matter that is coming before this board tonight? Hearing done, we move forward to item D, approve of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, okay. Do we have any legislative, want to do a legislative update? Hearing done. We're down to Board of Education. Mr. Cheeseman.
Sills of attended, if you would, please. Good evening, thank you for having us. Joining me this evening is Assistant Superintendent Mark Downe and Chief Operating Officer Dr. Marvin Bradley. We wanted to come in and say that we are returning to school and wanted to give you an update on that. We also want to say thank you for your support during this time. However, the Board of Education last Friday morning voted eight to one in emergency board meeting to go back on Plan A, which is under Governor Cooper's allotted plan. Specifically, grades pre-K through five will return in full on Monday, October 12th. However, a portion of our students will remain on Plan B, under the governor's plan of six through 12. And how those actually differ is that your sixth through 12th graders in this actual plan will return on a 40%, 60% model, meaning your middle school and high school students will come two days a week and be on remote learning for three days a week. Your pre-K through five students will come back four days a week and be on remote learning one day a week. And so, remote learning will occur throughout the district every Wednesday, specifically to give our teachers an opportunity to continue to plan effectively, being that they're going to work both in person and online with students. So far more planning goes into that, also so we can have attention to deep cleaning inside the building as needed and work effectively with all of our school bus and transportation, school nutrition, so on and so forth. But we're very excited to announce that they are coming back on Monday. And that follows suit specifically to what the board's initial plan was, is that at the end of the quarter, students would come back, and our quarter ends on the 14th, so you'll see the sixth through 12th graders coming back on Wednesday. Now, your middle school and high schoolers are divided into Group A and Group B. And so, Group A students will come Monday and Tuesday of the week and remote learn Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Group B students will do the opposite. They'll come Thursday, Friday, and remote learn Monday through Wednesday. Currently, right now, some of the issues that we face are the accommodation requests. We have just over 30 accommodation requests from employees, mostly teachers at this time and teacher assistants, to ask for accommodations, meaning that they would not come back face to face. So they're asking the district if they can in fact have some type of work accommodation, meaning could it be from home or could we do something differently in the building for them to make sure that they're in the most comfortable stage. Also, we do face some barriers in terms of transportation, because as you know, the governor did allow pre-K through five to come back effectively October 5th or later, but he's not made that decision for your middle school or high school model yet. And so, when you run two different plans in a school system, but you often share buses, you cannot have them share under these two plans. And so, part of what we're seeing right now is going to be a transportation barrier, meaning that we're going to have double runs and triple runs, especially on the north side, northeast area, and on the southeast area. So you're really looking at double runs and triple runs for Beth Elementary School, northeast Elementary School, possibly Northside High School, definitely Snowden Elementary School. These are places that you have K-8 specifically, so we do have three schools that are either K-8 or pre-K-8. And imagine what that looks like inside of a building when a portion of the school gets to go back under Plan A and a portion of the school gets to come back under Plan B. And so, we're having some difficulties managing that with our transportation. In fact, that we still have delays with trying to get people certified through DMV, but also specifically just having enough drivers, having enough route time. So in order to offset some of those barriers, we're looking at staggered bell times. As an example, at Beth Elementary School, you might see a bell time, a 20-minute difference, meaning pre-K through five comes in just a little bit earlier than your sixth, sixth or eighth students might come in. You'll also see that at northeast and maybe Snowden, too. So we're trying to be creative in terms of that scheduling, hoping that the governor will ultimately release sixth through 12 to come back under Plan A. So right now, Beaufort County Schools, effective October 12th, will be running two plans, Plan A and Plan B in that regard. In terms of how that looks for feeding and feeding our students, specifically, we look at the model of in-school and potential cafeteria use or potential meals into the classrooms. But what about those students who are virtual learners, remote learners? So at the same time, our school nutrition staff, who's been amazing since March, has just been absolutely amazing. But we're also going to have to run drive-through opportunities and meal pickup opportunities. So just a lot going on in order to structure the school system to make sure that all of our children are still well-fed, but at the same time, taken care of academically, all following within those social distancing rules. Now, be mindful of what Plan A and Plan B really mean. When you look at the North Carolina toolkit, and under Plan A, a lot of your requirements have shifted to recommendations. And under Plan B, your requirements remain requirements. So go back to Beth Elementary School, northeast Elementary School, and Snowden Elementary School. Your pre-K through five students, it's recommended that you social distance at six feet, whereas for six-eight, it's a requirement that you actually social distance at six feet. So just a lot of dynamics inside of a school building that, to be quite honest with you, you can practice all you want. In a good sports analogy, you can practice, 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 but you're really not going to know what type of audible you need to run inside the building until you have the students coming back. Now, I just want to take this opportunity publicly to thank all of our teachers, all of our teacher assistants, our nurses, school nutrition, transportation, our custodians have been amazing, but all of our personnel. But when you really look at what our teachers have done back in the springtime, bless them all for trying to survive it, trying to figure out how to provide a high-quality education to students when you're suddenly shut down on Saturday, the 14th, whereas now, they've been working tirelessly through the summer, but even into August and now into the fall, of really trying to master online learning with students. So we do anticipate most of our students will come back face to face. We do have a fair amount that will stay remote learning, and those are choices that the governor has allowed us to keep in place all the way till next June. And so, with that, we will have split populations, double-plan populations, multiple routes, as I said. But right now, we're handling it the best we can, and come next Monday, we'll learn whether we need to create some audibles in that regard. But I wanted to come in and answer any questions, give you an update, celebrate the fact that we're coming back to school.
Commissioner Langley.
And this may be something that you, you haven't had to deal with at all, substitute teachers.
Yes. We're having to deal with it. We had 365 on our original list through Mr. Downe's effort, and I'm sure you can talk more about it. That list is cut absolutely in half right now and maybe even not enough. We tend not to have too much of an issue of finding substitute teachers for elementary, and they love the young kids. We usually have a little bit more of an issue with substitutes in the upper levels. But specifically, we are going to have trouble with substitute teachers in terms of having enough to maybe fill some of the spaces as we do have accommodations. However, with that, there are board policies that allow the superintendent's position to transfer personnel across the district when there is a need. And so, I believe our personnel in the district understands, such as teacher assistants and others, that if there's a need in a different building, that we may have to move them in order to accommodate that need. And what does a need truly look like in that scenario? Maybe a teacher has asked for accommodations, we cannot find a substitute, and we might ask a teacher assistant to go work with us as the teacher teaches from home or somewhere other than school back into the classroom when the students are in the classroom. And so, we're really being creative, and Mr. Downe has done an exceptional job at that, of being creative around who has what skill set, what license, what opportunity, and who can truly move through the district, where right now, we're looking at teachers who will likely stay in their positions in their current schools to work with the students that they've already been assigned. But it's definitely a concern of ours, and even more so, Commissioner Langley, it's the financing of that that concerns us, too. And I'll give you a good example just as we finish. If we have 30 accommodations, and let's say 30 teachers needed an accommodation that required a substitute from October 15th until June 9th, if every day, and I know it's worst-case scenario, it would cost the district $530,000 to support that for the rest of the year. And so, we're really looking at being well fiscally in terms of how we're spending our money, but Mr. Downe and his team has been really thoughtful about how to move people around the district to give kids a high-quality education, but also fiscally sound. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cheeseman, what kind of numbers are you looking at students in the public schools compared to 2019?
Right now, I think we're just around 6,000 students. 2019, maybe without pre-K, we were around 6,300 students. I believe we lost about 5% starting the school year. That's pretty accurate. But we do anticipate many of those students coming back to us as the school opens, likely after the semester ends, so there's a smooth transition coming back. However, a fair amount of those students may have gone to private school, so you may actually see them stay there because of their fiscal expenditure requiring a whole year worth of finance in order to maintain that position. So maybe my mom and dad might not bring them back right away, but we're excited to bring our students back in that regard.
Thank you. Commissioner.
When you say the accommodation is going to cost us another $500,000, does that mean that the teachers who refuse to teach are still going to be paid?
So the accommodation looks somewhat broad. For example, there's an accommodation, maybe the teacher fills out that accommodation and says, "I would just like to have plexiglass around me, and so I can be stationary in the room." So no, the teacher's still there. If the accommodation is, "Hey, we can make it work where you're actually somewhere other than the school and can still teach in," then no, I wouldn't have to pay. I mean, they will continue to be paid in that regard. The accommodation that concerns us mostly is when a teacher turns and says, "I'll take a one-year leave of absence unpaid." Then I'm, they don't get paid, but I still have to pay somebody in order to teach that class. And I'll give you a great example right now. Not even concerned about an accommodation, just trying to find math, science, and E.C. teachers. As the year has already started, it's been a challenge. But to your point, if you're not working, you don't get paid.
When you say not working, you mentioned accommodations. What are the, what are the limits of being considered working? I mean, how far can a teacher go in specifying the requirements for their employment and still be on the payroll?
Well, we're looking specifically about how they would be staffed as the teacher engaging those students. So overall, we're looking at whether they're still the teacher of record of those children. And so, that's what I'm specifically looking at.
But if they say that they will teach a remote class, then who's going to manage their class, discipline in the classroom?
Great question.
It doesn't seem to me as though that's a legitimate demand.
It's a very legitimate demand if that employee has an underlying heart condition, diabetes, or whatever it might be. So from their point of view, and the employee writes, that's a legitimate request. On the flip side of it, under the accommodation, that's where we go back to your question, Commissioner Langley, of do we hire substitute to cover the class? Do I have a teacher assistant that I can shift to cover a class? Do I have teachers who are on prep periods, planning periods, that could possibly cover the class? Can I move counselors, administrators, like someone would have to cover the class? So your very question is the dilemma that we're in.
Well, the next question on a different subject. What, under what mandate does the school system have to provide lunches and food to children that don't come to school?
Well, you have a fair amount of students who are still considered remote learning. So under the governor's plan of being able to hold remote learning through June, we're still liable for those students. So very similar in the fact that those students are accountable for their learning and their grades, even though they don't step foot on our campus, we're still held accountable for their nutrition.
How do you get a lunch to a student like that? How do you get a student, a lunch to a 15-year-old like that?
So depending on which schools they're in, sometimes we have a drive-through opportunity where families can roll up to the school between 10:30 and 12:30, actually come through a drive-through line, take the name down of the student, like we did most of the summer, and then they receive a meal. In other circumstances, depending on the need of the child, sometimes we have social workers and other volunteers in our community who will bring the actual lunch to the house or to wherever the student may be.
When you say social workers, are these volunteers or are these paid?
Could be both. So in some circumstances, we have volunteers who are not paid because they're volunteers. And in some circumstances, we may have a social worker who may be going to visit a student, who in fact, they already work with the student and they're caseworkers and might be able to actually bring a meal to them.
In the case of students who are remote learners and have been remote learners, how many laptops and computers has the school system purchased for those students?
Well, we've actually run, let's see, we most recently purchased almost 3,000 Chromebooks, iPads, just before July 1st to help them. So we tried to be one-to-one across the district, K through 12. So typically, in K-2, we went with iPads, and three through 12, we went with Chromebooks. But that was to really update some of what we already currently had to make sure they were one-to-one. But always remember that a Chromebook iPad is not helpful inside of your house unless you have access. And so, we also utilized money that was given to us for hotspots. And most recently, we just again publicly want to say thank you to Rotary and the Hackney for raising $67,000 to help our district with hotspots for students who needed those.
How many internet connections have you paid for in the last six or eight months?
I don't pay for internet connections, sir. I provide hotspots to the students, but we don't pay any individual bills for individual people.
All right. Tell me what a hotspot is.
A hotspot is a technology device that provides an internet signal for students and for, you know, whatever learner is there. So it connects the actual device back into a realm so the student can get online, such as the internet.
Commissioner, DeSoto, do you have a question?
Yeah. We've got some of them. We were talking about teachers and classrooms, and we all wanted to know about the functionality of using teachers, especially in the lower grades, children, and social distancing, which is very important, especially, I think it's more important than math.
Sure.
It's going to be hard to enforce with these kids because they sometimes want to be very social, that's their nature.
Absolutely.
While they're in school.
Absolutely.
How are you going to enforce social distancing with the young, really young ones, the pre-K, pre-8, 8th graders?
Well, let's talk about the young ones, like you said. Let's not enforce, but let's encourage. Let's teach children. Young people really want to impress their educators. They love their teachers. And believe it or not, it's the young people who will likely follow it more than some of the older children that we have, right? Who might test you a bit. And will a child take it off, take the mask off? I'm sure they will. But we're going to have to teach them about the importance of wearing it. Now, what we have found in other districts and even in our own county, we do see kids wearing masks. But we also want to try to provide them breaks where they can go outside, they can be six feet away from each other, they can take a mask break. So we're not looking for the child to wear the mask all day long, seven straight hours without a break where their face is sweaty. But in fact, we're trying to put them back through protocols and routines and rituals, just like you typically would in any other kindergarten first grade class when they're first coming back, is you teach them how to act and behave appropriately. And in this case, you're going to do that to help them maintain their own safety. But in fact, we're asking for a lot of our families and community to help our children learn what it means to wear a mask. And honestly, we're starting school in October, and we've seen a lot of children in this community know how to wear masks. And, you know, we've already talked to some of our other sister districts around us who have said they don't have that great an issue around the mask.
More scheduled recesses?
Well, I think more, maybe scheduled recess for younger, but just more breaks for them in order to feel like they're getting a breath of fresh air or an opportunity in that regard. You know, for example, in this regard, I'm greater than six feet from you, and I'm not wearing my mask.
We're not happy with what I expect already.
But you don't know that I, but you don't know that I wouldn't. Like I could suddenly, I could suddenly just cough on you, right? Right? So look, no one really forecasts the accident, right? Or at least in my circumstance, I've been a really bad forecaster of my own accidents, right? So my key part about that is, we want to encourage children, not enforce. We want to make sure that it's an environment where we're all learning through this. Now, what I really look at is adult behavior. Adult behavior is a little bit different because they're making choices to do something different than what your protocols are. And again, we're going to encourage our adults before enforcement or accountability would come into play.
Is there a need now for more assistance, teacher assistants with something to follow me to add, or something you'd have to be somewhat shielded from students?
I think anytime that we have a greater number of adults helping us with, especially young people who tend to get up and move around, that would be very helpful to us, absolutely.
Is it all after parents?
Well, I think there's a difference, too, because you also want to really make sure that your school building is running effectively but safely. So a line of volunteers is not necessarily the relief that's going to help us, when we want to make sure that we have a certain amount of numbers inside of a room spacing accordingly. So we just want to make sure that whether it be substitutes, that they're trained and go through the training that Mr. Downe and his team provide, whether it be volunteers, that they would go back through some training. But we're never going to turn someone away who believes that they can be of assistance to us. We at least want to have a conversation around that.
Commissioner Raipol, do you have a question?
I just had a comment. I can't imagine the difficulty y'all have been going through trying to put this together under the constraints that you've got from the state, federal, whatever. And I've got, I've got children in other school districts in this state.
Yes, sir.
And it is an absolute mess. I mean, what's going on? So I applaud you for the efforts that you're putting forward to bring this thing to some sort of a reasonable process that gets these kids back into school.
I appreciate you saying that. And, you know, what's very interesting is whether you believe the virus is real or not, and it doesn't discriminate, but the stress that our adults are engaged in is real. And so, honestly, one of the greatest things I'm mostly concerned about is the mental health and wellness of our adults. We see it. It's hard to watch. But the other part that you may not be aware of is September was, you know, suicide prevention awareness month. And I know that you have limited time here for me this evening, but if you in your mind had to guess at what grade level we have the greatest suicide ideation, and you guessed grade four or five, you are correct. Young people are extremely stressed because their normal is abnormal. And so, it is, we need in Beaufort County schools and in Beaufort County to remember that it's okay not to be okay, meaning that if you're not okay, it's okay to get the help that you need. And we're finding that with our adults, we're finding that with our children, we're finding that with our families. Because remember, you have an awful lot of families in this county who send their children to our schools for the best education. But since March, you're also sending them to our schools to be fed twice a day because they don't have that at home right now. And so, I appreciate your compliment on behalf of all of our employees, because I cannot express to you the mental stress that we're watching our adults go through of having to make decisions about their own physical well-being versus coming in to educate a child in Beaufort County. That's real. Whether you believe the virus is real or not, the stress is real.
Commissioner Waters.
We have on the agenda later tonight broadband.
Yes, sir.
Would you, would you mind telling us where our weak spots are in Beaufort County? I know you talked about hotspots, but I'm assuming that's not a long-term solution.
No, definitely not, sir. Definitely not. Well, let me say this to you. In Beaufort County, there's not one particular place for Beaufort County schools where students are missing. Broadband is essential. And so, there are spots in northwest of Washington here where students don't get it. There are spots in northeast above, you know, Pine Town where students don't have access. There are spots right there in Chocolinity, in deeper ends of Chocolinity, that they might not have it. And again, down in Aurora. So what we're finding is there's pockets of places where students and their families cannot use their cell phones, don't have access because of some of the broadband issues. Now, I forget the actual number, but at one point, I think we gave out almost 1,068 hotspots. So you're talking about just over 1,000 children at one point needed some type of access because they did not have the broadband access that you're talking about. But I can send a map to all of you just to show you, like, the dots on the map of where it is for us. That might be helpful to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cheeseman.
Hey, thank you for your time.
I didn't finish. Didn't cut you off, and you hadn't raised your hand.
I raised my hand, and I was talking to you.
Go ahead.
How much additional funding do you estimate you're going to see received?
State and federal this school year?
Well, what I can tell you is, in total, since, you know, last spring to this moment, we've received 3.169 million. And so, that includes the original CARES Act drop of 1.947 million. Now, it's really hard for me to predict, and let me give you a reason for that statement. There have been times throughout this entire process that we're suddenly made aware of money that's going to drop to us from our legislators who are working on schools, on the behalf of schools. And I'll give you a great example. PRC 125 for Child Nutrition was suddenly dropped to us back in June and initially had to be spent by the end of June. So there are times when we receive some type of funding that's coming to us. We have about 48 hours, 72 hours notice, and then have to turn around and spend it. But in some of those circumstances, too, our state legislators have been really great at listening to the voices of superintendents and teachers and others, so that after they drop it, and sometimes they'll expand the timeline. But with that, I can't say for certain what's going to come. What I do know is, we're being funded off of what the previous budget looked like, and so I can't anticipate any more than what I already have.
You've completed your budget based on the approximately $17 million that Beaufort County gives the school system, and you've completed your budget based on what you anticipate from the state.
Sure.
And you've completed your budget on what you anticipate from the feds. Could we have copies of all three of those budgets?
Yes, sir.
And I'm talking about down to at least purpose and function.
Oh, sure. Should like to say all, I'll be happy to give it to you.
Well, that's for all the commissioners I'm making the request.
Absolutely. I think it's good to have knowledge.
What's going on in the school system, make a statement, is a total disaster. This governor having seized power is unconstitutional. I'm hoping the legislature will finally, when they meet again, take charge of things in North Carolina, and that we can get out of the horrible situation that we're in. I can't tell you the number of parents that I listen to who complain about the situation. It's horrible, it's awful, it's hurting families, and I am absolutely overwhelmed by how deep into socialism that we have crept that we are now responsible for feeding children. I have difficulty believing that the parents in this county cannot feed their children. I really, I just don't believe it. I think the parents can feed their children and do feed their children, and I think this is another seizing of power so that more families can become dependent on the government. This is a horrible situation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time.
All right. We're down to public comments.
Mr. Chairman, real quick. Just a reminder for the board, a little different setup tonight. The podiums have moved back so that you're able to see the speaker, and the speaker doesn't have to turn around. But more specifically for Commissioner DeSoto and Commissioner Booth, your mics are back to your regular mics, so they're pushed to talk. They aren't the ones that are always hot, so you'll need to remember to push your mics. Thank you.
Mr. Tandy Dunn. Mr. Tandy Dunn.
We'll get choked up by the time we come up here. First off, I've said it before, I'm glad I don't have kids in the school system right now. I don't think I can handle it. None of my grandkids are still struggling to do classwork from home. And I really appreciate the schools doing what they can to get things going back to normal. I noticed on our agenda, we have several issues dealing with trash still. I went out Saturday, went down to the site at Buck Jones, and they've got a C and D container in there. And it's eight foot tall. And the only way you can get materials in it is stand on the outside of it and throw the two by four inside. Or you piece of plaster or pears or whatever. That's a safety issue. You know, how many times can you toss a two by four into an eight-foot tall container without it not coming back down and hitting somebody? If we're going to do these, these containers need to be where somebody can drive up and dump off into them instead of tossing up to them. Also notice reading that we don't own or will currently or are going to own Ransomville. And so I kind of question, is that why we've not fixed that site so that our elderly citizens can drive up and throw something in the trash can? When they're still continuing to have to crawl upstairs to throw trash away? And that's the safety issue. So yeah, I don't know what the contract renegotiation is about today, but I ask you to consider if it is about home pickup, that that is a new service that needs to be bitted on. We cannot just rewrite a contract and provide a whole new service because that's what the public wants. We've got to do something a little bit better than what we're doing. Like I say, throwing trash over eight-foot tall wall is absolutely ridiculous. So please be mindful of what you're doing on the trash. It's going to be a hot button topic at some point in time. Don't make it today. And you know, just look at what we're doing and look at our contracts a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mish?
Ms. Mish asked me to read this into the record to the board. To the Beaufort County Commissioners, if by now, near the end of 2020, the jail committee has or is learning everything there is to know about the many issues that constitute our jail, remember the final outcome is the moral obligation we all have to this community. Those who can make a difference or seek change must continually ask that the bar be raised, ask for help for those who need our help the most. There is a new jail petition circulating. It is a reminder of all the rights that are being violated against our pretrial jail population. It states food is brought in from Plymouth, which has hair and bugs, spoiled and moldy. It also states during Hurricane Florence, jail residents were evacuated due to standing in their own urine and feces. It addresses civil and constitutional rights violations as part of a long list of ongoing violations that we've allowed to perpetuate. The petition may be found searched via Google. Beaufort County needs a new jail ASAP. And on Facebook, New Jail Beaufort County. I've asked Ms. Moser to make this statement available so that anyone who wishes to view it may. Thank you, Ms. Mish.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is a glorious statement that's made by someone who's too cowardly to come in front of this board and in front of the public and state. I have heard these allegations over and over and over. I have personally investigated some of those allegations and I have found them to be categorically untrue. And I don't think that this board should allow someone to send a statement in to be read under the authority of the clerk to the board. We should stop that. That should never happen again. They can get a friend to come and read the statement for him, but a county employee should never present as authority something from the public that is a plain lie.
Barbara Gaskins, is she here?
Good morning, or good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Richardson, you first. I'm the one that set up that petition because we do have a jail that needs to be, something needs to be done. And it's very funny that you can actually discuss a school, you can see what's going on with the school, but you can't see that a pretrial jail, a pretrial. That's fine. Can I do that in three minutes?
We have rules that stop that and the chairman should be enforcing those rules. May I ask where you work? Who are you? Why not?
No, I mean, I can. ACLU, Emancipate North Carolina, Advance Carolina, which one?
Now you've got the pitch.
Right. But anyway, the jail is a pretrial facility. So therefore, these people should not be treated like animals. And I mean, if you have commissioners and granted, I'm telling everyone that they need to vote. And I'll leave it right there. You need to vote to get people who are not for you out of their seats. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaskin. We're down to items for consent. One note on that is that there's a revision on the minutes that we're talking about approving. It actually had the August date on it that should say September, right, Kating? That's the only revision. Is there a motion to approve?
Second motion.
All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. All of us opposed, six, one. Okay, Mr. Jim Mattson. I guess he squirts coming this way. He can hear us.
I would wipe my face, but my fault. Hope everybody's doing all right.
You're going to tell us how we're doing, right?
I can. Some ways good, in some ways maybe not so good. So we are 196 days since the beginning, or since our first case here in Beaufort County. And we are in our sixth month since the activation of the Emergency Operating Center. And on the 12th, we'll be starting our seventh month. That's where we begin with the North Carolina numbers. We've done, the North Carolina has seen over 200,000 cases, which is 3,637 deaths. Currently, they have 971 people that are hospitalized and they have tested over 3 million people in North Carolina. So I wanted to start with the North Carolina numbers. I'm showing you this graph which shows the number of visits to the emergency department, what percentage have COVID-like illness. So the red graph shows the peak that we had a little over a month ago in North Carolina and has gone down. So currently, we are about 4%. So about four out of 100 of the people that go to the emergency department go there for COVID-like illness. The peak was at 6%. Typically, we want it to be, typically 1% is what you call the baseline number. So that's where we want to get it back down to. And that follows, this is COVID-like illness, so the flu and COVID-like illness follow the same graph. This shows the number, in gray, you see the number of admissions to the hospital in North Carolina. In blue, you see those that were admitted to the ICU. And the line on that graph shows the percentage of those that went into the hospital to be admitted went into an ICU facility. So it kind of shows some of the severity level to it. And that is hanging at about 20% of all the admissions end up going into the ICU across North Carolina. This graph here is showing the number of hospitalizations on any given day, the top graph does. So currently, and for quite a while now, it's been at about 950 to 1,000 people that are in the hospital at any one time. The bottom graph shows the number per day that are going in. And so that's about 300 per day that end up going into the hospital in North Carolina. And so when I divide the top one by the bottom one, that's about three days on average that people stay in the hospital once they get into. And of course, that's an average. Some people stay in it quite a bit longer. And for, that's for all of North Carolina. I also was able to check down eastern North Carolina and that is about three and a half. So we average about half a day longer than the state as a whole. So one of the ways for judging the capacity in our area, you know, as far as resources goes, is to look at something like the ventilators. And these are the number of ventilators that are available are in light blue and then the number that are being used are in dark blue. So eastern North Carolina is the third one over, highlighted in yellow. And you can see that about 32% of the vents are being used presently. And that leaves about 2/3 available if need be. This is for eastern North Carolina, so that runs all the way down like Onslow County, all the way up to the Virginia border and all the way over to Wilson. So it's a pretty big area that that number shows. The next one shows something a little bit more close to us. And this is a divided medical system, so there are nine hospitals all pulled into one. And so the top light blue line shows the number of beds that are being occupied. So you can see those numbers. The gray one shows the number of ICU beds that are being used. And then the light gray at the very bottom shows the number of ventilators that are being used. So that kind of shows the impact and the number of ICUs and the number of ventilators has gone, you know, has stayed pretty steady. Where the number of beds that were used peaked about a month and a half ago. And then we've gone to a recent peak as well. So it's kind of two waves that are showing on there. Then looking at Beaufort County numbers specifically, total number of tests that we have conducted is over 16,000 tests that are done on residents in Beaufort County. Some of those are repeats. For example, the long-term care facilities, they get tested every week. So theirs numbers do show there. The total cases that are tested that have been positive is 1,127. That's current of today. Since the beginning of COVID, we've had 65 people that have been put into the hospital. And we've had 28 deaths. We had one today that we confirmed. And for confirmation, I usually hear about the death, but I wait until I get the death certificate for me to confirm it just to make sure that it's not listed real low on the line. So all the ones that I confirm are in section A, which says it's, the doctor wrote as the cause of death would be directly to or indirectly to the COVID-19, but not just an interesting condition.
I have a question while you're there. Most of these people are over the age of 65 and have another condition in addition to the COVID?
Correct. As a matter of fact, the average age of death in our county is 77.6. So that's out of the 28 individuals.
I forgot already. Most of the deaths that we've seen in Beaufort County in the last few months, weeks, months, still the nursing home folk.
I did have something of that later, but for, 13 out of the 28 deaths have been in long-term care facilities. So that's 46%.
Yeah, and that's been mostly in the last, what, three weeks, four weeks? A lot of it.
About three weeks, three quarters.
Thanks.
So currently today, we have eight people in the hospital and recovered 1,000 people. I'm still currently investigating two outbreaks at long-term care facilities right now. So this is a graph showing the day-to-day count for the numbers that have been positive that have been reported to the Health Department on what day they've been reported to us. So you can see we had a couple of major spikes that occurred in there. And not just the individual day with the high numbers, but on either side of it, oftentimes you'll see some high numbers. So those are some significant spikes. Many times those are associated with some kind of testing event that has gone on. The long-term care facilities, they get tested weekly. And so oftentimes, all those results come in at the same day. And so they'll be reported on that day. And so to help compensate for that, look, the next graph I have, the top one shows a seven-day average to kind of, to dole those bigger peaks. But even with a seven-day average, you can still see some peaks that are occurring. So the first peak that you see way back on the left side, that's in July. If you remember, just after the Fourth of July time period. And then since then, we've had a couple of smaller ones until it got to the big one. That was, you know, in the September timeframe, late August, September timeframe, which is where the nursing homes really started to show at that particular time. The second one is, instead of it being a seven-day average, it's a 21-day average. And that makes it a little bit easier to kind of follow what the trend looks like in the county because you don't have all those little spikes going up and down. So you can see that we've had pretty much two waves. The one in July timeframe, which is that first hump. And then it was level for a while and then we had the second hump, which is what we've gone over the last three to four weeks. You can see at the end of that, that number, it started to go back down. And I'm hopeful that it'll continue to go back down. But I can't predict the future. That's the hard part about my job. And everybody wants me to say it's going to be good in two weeks or something like that. But usually I can only tell you what it looks like at this point. So, but hopefully it'll all be going down. So the next slide is actually showing the number of active cases that are in the county on any one day. So you can see the very similar, the same two bumps in there. So the first one being in July and the second one being the one that was most recent. And again, it's showing that it's going back down. So I'm very hopeful that we will continue to go down. So this is from the state. So they capture some of the positives too. So you can see that they captured the same two waves that we had captured. They do theirs at a week at a time. So their numbers look a little bit different. But the reason I included this was because the peak in there shows the number that were associated with the long-term care facility. So you can really see that peak and how it attributed to the overall numbers in our county. So they had quite an influence on the number in the county. So then, so I was able to take out all the long-term care facility numbers so I could show you all what that looked like. So you can see a small bump back in the July timeframe. And then we had the huge bump that occurred over the last four weeks. As I mentioned earlier, this is 46% of our deaths have occurred from this outbreak at the long-term care facilities. I'm using this graph to show the regional impact of COVID. So these are the total number of the rate for each of the ZIP codes in our county. And this is since the beginning of the COVID outbreak. And you see that Washington, Pantego, Bath, and Chaco Winnity are the bigger hip locations for us overall. Hopefully by now, everybody has gotten to the surveillance graphs that I keep online and you're able to see all these graphs, but you're also able to see some more graphs, including something that's not the whole outbreak, but just the last couple, three weeks. So you can kind of figure out or see which ZIP codes are being hit the hardest. I didn't include that today, but I wanted to include it underneath there. The table to show you the same ZIP codes and the numbers and the rates there, but also so you can see the deaths. The last column over there shows the deaths and where they've all occurred. And you can see that 20 of the 28 have occurred in Washington and most of those again being associated with the long-term care facilities. This is some demographics of the positives, which wasn't so much the interest that I was going to bring to you, but at that last column again, I've included deaths so you can get the demographics of the deaths. And 64% of the deaths are to white, 25% to black. Women, females are much higher than men at this point. I think that's because women live longer than men, you know, so I think it's impacted. And 86% of the deaths have occurred in somebody that's over 65. And 86% of the deaths have occurred, and some of that's over 65, and almost all the ones that I've looked at with the death certificates, they do have some kind of contributing comorbidities that have been part of their, um, the death certificate. Looking at all the cases we've had, about 18% of the people that have been tested positive do not show any symptoms of COVID, or they reported no symptoms of flu-like illness or COVID-like illness, that's down from 22% a month ago. I'm thinking that a lot of the non-ill are not going to the test, get tested as much as they did early on, so that's probably why we're not picking up as many asymptomatic Next slide, this one shows the percent of the positives that are known to be a contact, so the light blue are 55% of them were tested because they were contact, or when they would come up positive, they'd be identified in contact of, so that's a little over half of them. The other half, the 45%, is what we consider as community-acquired cases, and this is just for Beaufort County numbers. So seeing some of the Beaufort County numbers, you might say, well, how are we faring compared to the other counties around us? So I've used this to kind of demonstrate that we've done actually a little bit better than most of the counties around us. So we've had 215 per 10,000, that's our rate, and you can see that Duplin County is the highest at 419, but certainly you see some 283s and 300s around there. So we're doing a little bit better than most of the counties around us with the numbers. I will say that this also equates to 2.15 per 100, so that's what percentage then of our county has come up positive, so about a little over 2% of our county has already tested positive for COVID. So this top number, our top graph shows the number of tests that have been conducted. You can see we peaked at 1,800, and we're down to about 600 per week that we're testing. Why is going down? I think in part, people are not wanting to get tested as much as they did at the beginning, so the demand is not there for testing, and then we did a lot of community outreach efforts, and those places are not asking us to come back anymore, so, you know, I guess that they're not interested in testing right now as well. I also wonder if sick people are not coming in to get tested right now either, so I think there's a lot of people that may be sick, just stay home, or call their doctor and say, I'm sick, and they stay at home, and they're not going to get tested either. That's what I think might be going on in the county. The bottom graph shows the percent of the people that we tested that are, that we have tested came back positive, and that is at around 5.5% right now. The high we had was about 10, close to 10%. So that's typically a good thing, except for if people aren't coming in to get tested, I don't know if that factor changes this a lot, but I'm sure it does in some way. Next slide. And this is just a graph showing all the different tests that we have done in the community. I swore I was going to read you the number, but I can't read it on here. I think it's 3.5% of all the tests that we have done has come back positive, I think it's a little over 1,500 tests, something like that, so that's how many tests we've been doing out in the community, not people coming in to be tested. So just quickly, a couple of other pieces of information to pass on, the annexed building progress, the cement has been poured, and was poured on Friday, it's been setting, and after a week, it'll be ready for the building to go up, and we hope for the building people to come out next Monday to start building, so it'll be up by the end of the week, and then we can start using it the following week. So the vaccine plan, I actually have a copy of the vaccine plan, this is a state plan, there's a draft of it, it's supposed to come to us on the 14th of October, basically laying out the way we're going to vaccinate in the state, and then how we'll do it in the county will be based on that plan, but I anticipate that, and it hasn't changed much over the last month, we're going to get a small supply, that small supply would be used for probably healthcare workers and the long-term care facility residents, and followed next by the elderly and those with the comorbidities that we was talking about, and then next would be the higher, high-risk that don't quite fall into there, and then lastly would be the general population. I don't expect us to be doing the general population though until the beginning of next year, but those first vaccinations may be occurring in November, hoping. I probably shouldn't say anything on television, that could be proven later wrong, but that's what I'm hearing. And then just a reminder that influenza season is occurring, and just like the COVID, you know, it's also a deadly disease, and remind everybody to go get your flu shots. Any questions about COVID?
Mr. Bush.
Since you stopped doing the community testing, can you, for the public, can you tell what days that you're doing, still doing testing in the county? I have had several people ask me, where can you get a test at?
Now, we haven't totally stopped the community testing, it's just that the community leaders aren't asking us to come do it at their sites right now, so, but we would if they asked. And I, we do have like one scheduled this week, but it's just not the numbers that we did before, but as far as the Health Department, every Thursday from 9:00 to 11:30, you can drive through and get done at the Health Department, or you can call for an appointment, and we'll schedule you to do it.
Yes, sir.
Do you want else? Frankie?
Jim, I was trying to take some notes when you were going through it, and I just want to confirm, make sure I've got the right information, the average age of the people that have died is 77?
77.6.
And 46% of the people that have died have been in long-term care?
That's correct.
Facilities, which would be 13?
Correct.
Do the number. And I, I guess, I don't know if I'm the only one or not, I'm missing all the graphs that were on the backside of the page. Is this the same information that you put up in your slides?
Pretty much, there's a couple of slides, the state ones that aren't on there, but everything that is Beaufort County related is on, on the site.
Okay, you can just email them?
Except for that one, the one that I did is just the long-term care facilities, that one graph, that's not on the site, I can send it to you directly.
Okay.
Or she says she'll get you a copy.
When you look at the, I look at the places where the numbers are real high, when you look at Pantego, I'm assuming that includes, the reason that one's in there is because of the long-term care facility there in Pantego. So we have one there and two in Washington that we're dealing with?
No, that one's over, that one's considered over, so we have two in Washington.
But I mean, we still have two facilities in Washington.
Correct.
Long-term.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Rep. Old.
Jim, given that the schools are going to be going back another two weeks, how prepared are we to support them with, I mean, do you have the equipment and the?
Well, I mean, we're as prepared as we can be. I think that what we need to be prepared for is that we're going to have clusters that occur at the school, so, I mean, the, Mr. Teasman and I talk, and if something happens, we also have the school nurses at work a lot with the Health Department on this, so I think the resources are there for them to talk to us right away, so that we can assess the situation, but we have to be, we have to know that we're going to have cases. Now, the research shows that schools running don't add to an outbreak in a county, and you'd be part of the outbreak system as a county as a whole, but they don't make it, they don't seem to show a large increase in numbers based off of schools. You do get some cases, and you're going to have some clusters that occur, so if it's a young classroom, that cohort may end up being quarantined for 14 days, but the whole school should not have to shut down. So we have to assess the situation, if it's one of those classes where our kids are all mingling from one to the other, that makes it a little bit difficult for us to decide.
Well, I think it's important that we reassure the parents that this, you know, the plans are in place.
The plans are in place.
Mr. Bush. Stan, did you have a question? Okay, you want to go on to your next presentation?
Right, so what I'm going to ask for is, there's also a slide for that. So what, I have an FTE, or health educator that works at the Health Department right now, who's a contract person, she concentrates on the reducing the risk program at the schools, and, you know, health education to me is a very vital part of the infrastructure of public health. I think that, like, health education, along with policy, is one of the biggest driving forces, why tobacco went from, you know, 50% people smoking to about 20% people smoking. So I do firmly believe that health education is important. So this person works with the schools to reduce the risk of teen pregnancies in the county. When I first got here, we were looking at 50 pregnancies per year, and we're down to 39, 40%, or not percent, but numbers, per year. So I think we've been able to show some impact, and we want to make more impact, because we don't want children having children. So I want to get this position changed from a contract position, which it is currently, to a county position, and I can tell you all that there's no county funding that should be required, will be required, and the reason I want to do that is basically because I want to expand the focus of that person, so they're not just doing reducing the risk program. Because as a contract person, the RTR people approve the contract, and that's all they're allowed to do, but if they're an employee, I could also let them work on other childhood health concerns, such as obesity, vaping, and mental health, those are big issues in our daycare, daycare, or not daycare, of our children's age groups, so I'd like to be able to expand their work into that area. I'd also like to align this contract person with more health educators who are full term, full employees, and then lastly, I'd like to make sure the job is attractive to her, and that she stays there, and if she was to leave, then I would want to make it more attractive for people to recruit, and hopefully she'll stay though, because, you know, there's a big benefit to being an employee versus a contract person. So that's my ask, is that allow me to go ahead and make it a full employee.
Is there a motion?
I made the motion, I made the motion to approve, but I still got a question.
Okay, move. Ask him.
Your slide said there wasn't no county funds.
It is grant funding position, we expect to have for at least four more years.
Okay, that's what's my question.
And if the funding goes away, I will rip the position, I just think, I want to keep her here for as long as I can, because it's, she's been a great benefit to us in this program.
I still make the motion.
Is there a second?
I think it's a very important position, because it may save lives in advance of what we've, we know to be true, people that smoke, are obese, don't live good, solid, healthy lives, are the ones who are getting sick and dying easier, faster.
Even those definitely age groups, it's very important?
Yes.
To get them on the right path or beyond.
Oh, there'll be some other pandemic 30 years from now that'll take them.
We got a motion and a second discussion? Commissioner Richardson?
Would you be willing to change the motion to show that if the funding, if the grant funding goes away, that the position is to be lifted? No, it's not a matter of trust, are you willing to amend the motion to say that when the funding goes away, that the position goes away? If you're not, I'm not going to vote for it, I'll just tell you right up front, that's the only way I'm going to vote for it, I'm not voting to expand government.
I really do understand you not voting for it, Mr. Richardson, but I want to remind you that you don't have a weighted vote, it's the majority rules, so if you don't vote for it or not, I'm going to let my motion stand.
Mr. Chairman, I do understand how the system works, and it's four votes that makes it work, and I understand that very well, but by the same token, I'm not voting to expand the size of government. This is another one of those things that's nice, I support what he's trying to do, I think it's a great thing, but the public has taken on feeding children now, two days, two meals a day, and we're getting ready to take on providing more and more medical services. Socialism never stops creeping in on us, so I'm not going to vote for it if you can't.
All right, time to vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand, all those opposed, 6-1, motion passes. Thank you, Jim. We need Ms. Ann Williams.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and for those that may not know, Mr. James Allen is the chairman of the Beaufort Soil and Water Conservation District's Board of Supervisors. I have just a short thing here I'd like to read. Through the 2020 watershed restoration project, the Beaufort Soil and Water Conservation District was awarded funds from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Division of Soil and Water Conservation for the removal of 111,518 linear feet of vegetative stream debris from various creeks, streams, and tributaries in Beaufort County. Those grant funds totaled $334,554. On September the 3rd, 2020, a request for proposals was issued soliciting bids to complete the scope of work planned for this project. The request for proposals was mailed via the U.S. Postal Service and emailed to 18 contractors, seven of which are from Beaufort County. The request for proposals was also published on several websites and in the Washington Daily News. Six contractors submitted bids for the district's project, none of which were local. The bid tabulation is provided for your review along with tonight's agenda abstract. The district's Board of Supervisors met on September 29th, 2020, to review and discuss information gathered on the four lowest bids. After thoughtful discussion with regard to reference checks, the district's Board of Supervisors selected RDC Debris Removal Construction LLC, who offered a bid of $197,386.86 to accomplish the district's proposed scope of work under the 2020 watershed restoration project. The Beaufort Soil and Water Conservation District's Board of Supervisors recommends that the Beaufort County Board of County Commissioners support their selection of RDC Debris Removal Construction LLC at a bid of $197,386.86 to accomplish the proposed scope of work under the 2020 watershed restoration project.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is a second?
Second.
Is a second, discussion. Time.
Two questions, is this, how many, how many miles did you say?
111,518 linear feet.
Is that the full extent of everything in the county?
No, sir.
Okay, so there are other areas that probably need to be dredged also?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So in that, I mean, are we limited to just these for some reason, these streams?
Mostly what we're going off of are phone calls to the office from people that are having problems in their areas. Our district resource specialist goes out and scouts areas, and then the board decides.
Okay, because it seems to me that you've got a lot more money to spend than you're spending, plus you're not even going with the lowest bidder.
Yes, sir.
Is there a problem with the references on the lowest bidder?
The references for the lowest business were way less than stellar. The references for the lowest business were way less than stellar. Fact of the matter is, the people we called to check, their references didn't have anything good to say about them.
Okay. Okay, and you've got good experience with the other one?
Yes, we do. We've had experience with the contractor that we chose.
Okay, so you're gonna have, what, $140,000 left from the grant?
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna be able to spend that on other streams that we identify?
We already have a list of people that have called and asked to be considered for the money.
Okay, because I know in some of the outlying areas, Bellavon and Aurora Net, we've got lots of streams that are backed up and don't drain.
We'll tackle them as we get to them.
Is there, is there a way to get, is there a way that the public knows that?
It's been published in the paper, and word of mouth.
Commissioner Waters?
I noticed some of these areas is caused by storm debris from hurricanes. What, are any of these some of our problems that we have with the beavers?
Yes.
Damming up the stream?
Well, in the Chalk Winty area in particular, we have cleaned out, and we have contacted a trapper to trap the beavers. And my personal opinion is, if we don't get the beavers, we won't do a whole lot of good.
I noticed this morning that DOT was on 99, trying to unstop one of the, I guess, where the beavers had filled up one of the large drainage.
I haven't seen that.
They're close to the loop rate. Uh, it's the one that they've unplugged one time, where it got dammed up by beavers.
That cover is mine to be replaced. I hope they don't wait too long to do it.
Do you have one? Stan's got one question.
About the beaver?
Yes, sir.
And in a case like that, if you were to have to go across the stream, you have a property on either side, you have to get the property owner's permission for it before you take out that beaver?
That's true. And before we, on all these projects, we have to get the landowner's permission on every foot that we use or try to clear out, we have to have their permission before we can go in.
Some people might want a beaver.
Well, I would hope not too much. What you do, you get the beaver dammed out and plant trees.
Any more questions? Time to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, 7-0. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Melanie?
Ann, where's this company at that had a bid of $3 million?
Um...
Are they out of Miami?
No, sir. I don't have that information with me. I was kind of thinking it might be Smithfield, but I'm not sure.
They have, I think, they have an office in Smithfield, but I think the company itself is out of state. We've had companies bid from out of state. We've had, we've had companies that bid that, from their bid, they didn't really want the job anyhow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, DSS is here requesting approval of a purchase order over $30,000 pursuant to the Beaufort County purchasing policy. This is for laptops. If you recall, last month, the Commissioners approved five laptops from CARES Act funding and the remainder funding we have in the DSS budget.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All, 7-0.
I'd like to make a comment on this. Thank you for your explanation. I could understand it.
Okay.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, we have a request to advertise and fill five vacant positions at DSS. Three of those are income maintenance caseworkers. One is administrative position, and one is the computer administrator, two. Two of the income maintenance caseworker positions became vacant earlier on, right after the freeze was enacted in April. One was from a retirement, one was from a promotion. One actually became vacant today. And the processing assistant, four, has been vacant about a month. And then the computer support administrator, one, has just become vacant as of today due to a transfer.
Is there a second?
No question.
Second.
The headcount is not increasing. That's all in the resistant headcount.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. 7-0, motion passes.
Thank you.
Martin Johnson?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Welcome.
Hi. I'd just like to first just say a few words of thanks to you all for the 39 jobs and the $1.4 million that's gonna be invested by Pamela Coair in the county. It was through your help in terms of, with the county manager, working with the Committee 100 to build the industry-ready building, which actually has served us very well in terms of being available for two hurricanes, helping two companies in the Christmas rush, three companies that I showed the building, and then they actually located in other facilities in the county. One facility, MJM Yachts, that will be moving to a bigger facility, and now Pamela Coair, which I believe will have a very long, long life in the building. With Pamela Coair, that'll bring the employment in filtration companies to 670 in the county. And those companies would be Flanders, Camfield, PNG Manufacturing, and as I say, Pamela Coair. So again, thank you, thank you very much. I would like to introduce now, put my glasses on, I can't read this, Elizabeth Underwood, who's the new economic development specialist, and she comes to us from Charlotte and has an international public relations degree from the University of Charlotte. And I was told to say go on in us. But anyway, without further ado, Elizabeth Underwood to talk to you about the cannery project.
Thank you, yes, as an ex-student athlete from UNC Charlotte. That is where my loyalties lie. However, I am learning to become a Pirates fan, so I want to say good after, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update on the July 6th proposal by Martin to establish a cannery in Beaufort County. As you can imagine, since July, there have been many updates, and I'm excited to share those with you. The 5C NC Cannery will serve as a community center for farmers and citizens to process and preserve excess produce via canning. This is a significant need in the eastern North Carolina, specifically Beaufort County region, because the effects of COVID-19 have placed an incredible amount of financial instability on the area's farmers and community. Bill Booth and the Alpha Life Enrichment Center, Alec for short, will be establishing this cannery. The cannery will provide an opportunity for individuals to preserve and save goods for agricultural downtime, specifically those individuals who would be unable to provide food on the table for their families and themselves due to COVID-19 ramifications. The scope of this project is to serve low and moderate income families, farmers, and those mediating institutions that serve these communities through sustainable and accessible farming. We would like to apply for a CDBG coronavirus grant, and the maximum allocated funds for this grant is $900,000. With this $900,000, we would be able to purchase land, build the facility, operate the facility for two years, buy equipment, purchase a refrigerated commercial vehicle for transport, market, marketing materials, and some administrative slash application fees. Project Cannery will employ five full-time employees, and four of those jobs being allocated for low and moderate income individuals, paying an annual average wage of $40,000. The average 2020 Beaufort County wage rate is $38,008. These jobs will include one manager, one supervisor, three operators, and supplemental staff such as interns and volunteers as needed. The grant will require the cannery to achieve its capital investment and job creation goals, plus other grant obligations. I'd like to also inform you that Project Cannery is working with partners across the state in order to maximize outcomes to protect against COVID-19. Beaufort County Economic Development, Alpha Life Enrichment Center, Alec, Rise 29 out of ECU, the Department of Public Health, North Carolina Department of Agriculture, NCA&amp;T University, and the Mideast Commission will make up the body of partners that will work to establish this cannery to serve LMI populations in Beaufort County. The cannery will meet an urgent community development need for processing goods. This is an immediate threat to the health of the community, because COVID-19 has generated financial deprivation and food insecurity for members of the community. Individuals are struggling, as you know, to put foods on their tables due to job loss, job loss, and other COVID ramifications, which plays a significant role in the urgent need for affordable, sustainable, healthy food sourcing. So the Beaufort County Economic Development staff requests your approval to proceed with the cannery and the CDBG coronavirus grant application. Upon your approval, the next step in this will be a public hearing and the commission vote to submit the application. At this time, I'd like to invite you to ask any questions you may have regarding this operation.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Go ahead.
The disclaimer is, this is my cousin. I don't have no investment in this project, I'm no part of this project at all. And I just want to go on the record of that, so if anybody, when I vote, nobody can say that I had some interest in it. I have absolutely no interest in this project. Or councillor, should I recuse myself, or is it okay to vote? Okay, thank you.
Do we have an established business plan for this operation?
That is what we're working with Rise 29 with, the students there, and also myself and others, if you need it, it isn't time for it. And we're working with a facility in the junior where we're getting a lot of data, like they've been doing for the last 35 years.
I would think before it comes back for approval by the Commissioners, that business plan needs to be presented. Because I don't think we want to be voting to spend money on something that can't sustain itself.
That business plan from the Rise 29 interns is currently being developed. I think its final stage actually is this week, so it should be, it will be done.
Commissioner Richardson?
And that's the reason for sustaining, that's why the grant application, we're asking for two years of working capital to get it on its feet, and so that it doesn't, as you say, we don't build it and it crashes.
Who is gonna own this facility?
Alec.
Who?
Alec, the...
The Alpha Life Enrichment Center.
Who are they?
They are...
They're a nonprofit organization. However, this cannery will be a public facility, so although a nonprofit is owning it, we still can't apply for those grant funds.
But who is the nonprofit? Who are the officers? Who are the owners? Who's running the nonprofit?
Bill Booth is the president of the company, and then a number of his family members are the officers of the company. We're also, through the business plan, going to be having a board of advisors, of people who are familiar with cannery. And that's the reason why we have these other partners in this venture, such as A&amp;T and the...
Department of Public Health, North Carolina Department of Agriculture.
Is there a, will there be a provision for a board of directors?
There'll be a board of advisors to, right now is the plan.
How will they be different from a board of directors?
The board of directors would have, definitely would have voting power to tell Alec what to do, as a board of advisors.
I mean, somebody has to be in charge as a board. I mean, I know Bill Booth, I like Bill Booth, he's a great guy.
He will be the board, yes.
No, he can't be the board. We're not gonna do it that way, or I'm not voting for it. We're gonna have a board of directors, somebody that can oversee and make changes in personnel when it's necessary. Somebody has to run this thing. I mean, this is not like liberals, it just sort of goes along on its own.
This is not a county project, this is an Alec project that we're assisting them to put in place.
We may be assisting them, but we have a fiduciary responsibility for the $900,000 to somebody, and we also have a duty to the people of Beaufort County, because we are a political elected board. We cannot escape this.
Okay.
That's how it really works. Okay, now, the next question is, so they're gonna give us the grant for $900,000. Most of the time, these grants come through the county, and we set up an ordinance for the grant. What liability does the county have if you go out here and you get this building half-built, and that's all that ever happens?
The, the grant being... It, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, I'm sorry. Apologize for that. The grant will be a CDBG grant, and it will have, like all CDBG grants, will have a clause, you know, leaning back on the company to pay back the money. And we could have an additional, additional contract with the company to pay back the money.
Well, now, the clawback will come from where?
The clawback comes from two places. One, there is a clawback on the grant itself, and then, secondly, we could have, like we have on other grants, we could have a clawback, our own clawback directly to the company.
So we're liable for the $900,000?
No, when...
Why do we need a clawback if we're not liable?
We would, yes, okay.
We must be liable.
We would be liable if we did not have clawbacks, yes.
Well, no, wait a minute. We're liable for the use and the spending of the $900,000.
Right, yes.
And if somebody takes it and goes to South America with it, the taxpayers of Beaufort County have to write the check, pay it back.
We're employing Kevin Richards from the Mideast Commission, who will be overseeing the grant, both in terms of when we're doing it now, in terms of writing it, and also administering the funds. And he gets a fee for doing that. So the Mideast will be overseeing that.
All right, let's go back now. I'm not getting an answer that's a good answer. You go out here and you start this project, and they put the steel up, we buy property, pour concrete, put the steel up for the building, and Bill Booth dies, and there's nobody else to make anything happen. And it sits there for three years. Do we owe the state the money back?
The, in the, I would say we don't, Alec does, and that's what I'm trying to say, is that they would have a, we would have a contract with them, that they have to repay the money.
I know, but you see, Martin, you just tell me, I know how it works. I already know the answer before I ask you. The county has got the liability.
Has got the liability in terms of if the money is not spent in the manner that it is ordained to be spent. You know, if the money is being given to Alec to build the facility and start it running and employ five people. If, if the money is spent in that manner, then I don't think the state will come back at us and say, you didn't spend it in the manner that we said.
But if it's not spent in that manner, the state can come back at us and ask for the money back. Isn't that the way most CDBG grants work?
Yes, but as I'm saying, the money...
Okay, thank you very much. You answered the question finally.
But the money will be overseen and will be spent in the manner that is assigned. So it is unlikely that the state will come back. If you do spend, if you do go to South America, then yes, they will. If you do spend, if you do go to South America, then yes, they will get the money back.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion?
Thank you.
Do we not have a building that would be suitable versus going out and buying a tract of land and building on a brand-new building?
No, we don't.
We do not have anything existing?
We don't have, this happens to me every day. We don't have any buildings of any consequence that we can put anything in. Manufacturing, you know, Elizabeth's having to live in Greenville because there's no apartments here, there's not enough starter homes, we have a major lack of investment in all sorts of facilities in the county.
Well, if you, if you look at just the salaries for five people for two years, that's 400, and that's coming out of the, the grant, so you got 600 left for equipment, land and building. Is anybody else going to put any money in, in this project?
No, this is, this is through the COVID grant.
Okay, so you feel comfortable that 600 is going to buy land, build a building, and put the equipment in there that's necessary?
The land, we haven't met with the city, but the city owns the land right now.
Okay.
Next to the, next to the airport, and it is in the opportunity zone, which actually the state is enthusiastic about that.
I just question whether 900 is going to do what, what you're asking to do.
That's why, as Mr. Redholtz said, that we are doing the business plan, and we'll have a, an operating profit and loss, balance sheet, cash flow statements to make sure it can be done. And that's what we're necessarily going to, through the CDB process, through Rise 29, using the interns, to make sure it will work. We're not going to put it out there if it doesn't work. It just doesn't make any sense.
Thank you.
I'd love to have the building to put a manufacturer in there, but no, it doesn't make any sense to just put something up and not have it operate. The, as Elizabeth said, the stakes for low and moderate income people are just too high. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, seven zero.
I promise you, we won't lose money, okay?
We're going to take a 10-minute recess. We're back in session. Brian, did you come up so we can adjust the agenda just for one item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board received this morning from the clerk a request for an agenda item from the emergency services director. Director Hesbeth had a vacancy occur this morning in the animal control division, and based on that, based on their small department size, their current workload, and the on-call that they have, he deemed that to be a significant event and wanted to bring that to the board as an emergency item, so that he could go ahead and move forward with that. Under your, under your procedures, that item is not to be heard unless the board votes to approve that, and it has to be on a five-to-two vote for you to be able to do that. So what you would need to do to allow him to have that conversation with you is boot at least five-to-two to hear that item as an emergency item tonight, so I want to bring that to you.
Do we need a motion, or do we just need to vote?
I think you would need a motion to say we're viewing that under, under rule number nine of your procedures.
And it'll be, become item number four under emergency services, is that okay? Is there a second?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second? Got you. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passed. It's Carney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Board. First item I'll be going over with you is accept Bath Community EMS building and EMS unit as county property. I had reported to you in our budget retreat before, plans that were moving forth with community. Bath Community EMS, the nonprofit organization, has not been able to pull all of their board members together. We were, we were planning, as I talked with the president of that, to be before tonight, so we are really not ready to accept this at this point. They have not been able to pull that together yet.
All right.
Second item, Bath, a budget amendment for Bath Community EMS. Under that, if you remember several months ago, we had a budget amendment where Bath Community gave us $25,000 that was given for the purpose of remodeling Bath Community EMS, putting some bedrooms in there so it could be upfitted for 24-hour EMS service if the building was used for that. After the work began on that building, we found out that the septic system failed. That lowest bid of three bids we were able to get for that system was $18,050. We reapproached Bath Community about that unexpected thing that was coming in place, and they agreed to fund us $9,000 toward that. And so they have since given the county a check for $9,000, and we're just asking for a budget amendment to be put in our maintenance budget so we can take care of that. The other, the matching of that is in the original $25,000, so it's not any additional county funds that are being utilized.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passed. Next.
All right. Third item, I was requested to give a summary report on cost of EMS from 2017 to 2020, or it was actually the last four years, so I have that in front of you. I put together just a brief summary, and I'll go through with you so you'll understand where the numbers are. 2017, I put in place what we were providing as far as units and personnel. We started with two EMS units, that's two transporting ambulances, two QRVs, or quick-response vehicles, which totaled a 24-shift personnel to administrative personnel. You see, the original approved budget for 2017 was 1,000, excuse me, $1,787,714. The year-to-date expended, when that budget year closed out, you see, was $1,727,372. There was a billing income for that year of 2017. That would not be in our budget. That would come in on a different side. So we received $326,690 for EMS billing. And then, last year, from a lot of work from finance department, a lot of man and woman power, we were able to get Medicaid cost settlement back all the way, starting in 2017, and that amount for that was $188,458. So the $326,690, the $188,458 was additional income coming in, not included in my budget. So with the request for the cost of EMS, that has been subtracted. So you take the year-to-date expended, subtract those two, and you would see the total cost for 2017 to the county of $1,212,224. Does everybody see that concept, or any questions about that, before I go to the next year?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Does that include the capital costs for ambulance?
It would be in their annual budget, because any time we do a, any time we do a budget for the year, their capital costs are included in their budget. So if there was an ambulance in there, you'd see a bump of them. Yes, sir.
Mr. Waters.
Carney, how do you have the numbers as it relates to the EMS tax, that tax revenue?
I could get that information from you. I don't have that, that information.
Are you saying that the total cost for EMS is 1.2 million, is coming out of the general fund?
Yes, so, so when it says original approved budget, that is the budget that the county commission approved for EMS for that year. That was the original budget set for that year.
So if you were looking at the true cost, you'd have to add to that the EMS taxes collected on top of the approved budget. Correct.
You would take it out.
You would actually take it out.
Right.
It's revenue.
I don't, I don't have that, that figure in here, and it may just be from the interpretation of what I was asked, and that's, that's a very good point. I was looking at county cost.
I was thinking our total cost, and I'm just pulling this from memory, was somewhere around 2.6, so it leads me to believe that the EMS tax that we collect would have to be added to...
That's, that's just 2017. When we go through the years, if you get to 2020, you will see the cost of EMS in our budget was...
Okay.
2,500, and so, so it's an increase in cost from 2017. Any other...
If you all go back and give us EMS tax, I mean, and you can call it a cost, or you can do it either way, I don't care, but we need that cost. The total cost that you're saying on, showing on here is going to be the same.
That's right. The, what I don't have for you is the tax collection of the 5-cent EMS tax that is across the county, where Beaufort County EMS supports. I don't have that for you.
Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see that as a part of these numbers. And then, on the settlements, on the Medicaid settlement, is that a DISH settlement, or is that an adjustment?
I want to make sure I understand your question correctly, so I'm going to answer what I think, and then you tell me from there if I have. We apply for that. There's no guarantee of getting any funds. It just depends on what Medicaid excess money is there. We apply for that money through numerous record-keeping that goes against our cost. It's the cost that we have put forth towards Medicaid transports. From that, they award us an amount, and they tell us, we think this is going to be your amount, but then it goes through an audit. In fact, it goes through two audits. And, and so, we get that amount, and they hold a little bit of money back until the audit is done, and then that last amount comes in, or they make an adjustment. Does that...
Well, yeah, it sounds like a disproportionate share, a DISH payment, as opposed...
What it is, is it's remaining money that they have, and they go back and they settle it up. So it's additional money to us, brand-new money, new revenue for us, but it is based on the number of Medicaid calls that are, that occur, and, and what unrealized, what expenses were there by providers that weren't covered. And whatever's left over in that year, then they go back and they allocate that to all providers.
Yeah, and poverty areas get better consideration than metropolitan areas, for instance, in these kinds of DISH settlements. So that's what it sounds like. So with that, figured out, what about your Medicaid adjustments from your billing? Are you running pluses or minuses?
That would be a question for, for finance and our billing contract company, Collins.
Okay, well, when you bring, when you bring this back next month, just let us know about that.
Let me, let me ask you some clarification on that. When you say an adjustment from Medicaid/Medicare, I mean, what they do is, they give us a billing amount. When we charge against it, they'll only pay a certain amount. I'm not sure what I under, I'm not sure what you mean when you say an adjustment.
They audit those accounts periodically, and you get what's called a settlement. And it's bad news if they're telling you you owe some of the money back, and it's good news if they say you underbilled, and so we're going to write you a check. And it can go either way.
Right, okay. Yeah, I don't think we've been through one of those. I'm not aware of one of those recently.
Well, they're usually about four years behind in the audits, so maybe next year or the year after.
If, if we continue in the report, you see in 2018, there was a shift in EMS cost. We added a third station, the old Ford station, the truck that's housed there, so that would have been an addition of eight full-time employees. You see, original budget, year-to-date expended, I put to the right of that, the plus 16,680 would mean the difference, that's a plus, that the year-to-date expended was over the allocated budget amount. And that was an adjustment in 2018 in that we put the positions in place, we added positions, but we have bare minimum positions for EMS. In other words, we don't have vacation or sick positions. So with that, without taking a truck out of service, we have to pay overtime or someone to come in for each of those. And it's taken several years to figure out the right place. We started low, and we kept adding until we got to the right place to be able to cover that. So you see that 16,680 was mostly due to that particular piece. Yes, sir, the overtime category specifically. In 2019, we're running with the same staff. You would see an overage there if you look at the original approved budget to the year-to-date expended, an overage of budget of $267,907, and that seems really bad until we dive into it to see what it was. That was the year that Vint funded a bariatric ambulance unit for us after budget time, so there was an additional of revenue of $196,612 for that unit, the cost of that unit. So if you look to the right, I have that in, and it's been subtracted. So we had an overage of budget in 2019 of $71,295. About $55,000 of that was FEMA reimbursed money that came back in for Hurricane Florence, Hurricane Florence, and the other part of that was back specific to the overtime budget. Again, we were trying to get it up to be able to cover those costs. So if you look, the Medicaid cost settlement in 2019 is under review. We know we're receiving funds, but the audit has not taken place yet, so we don't want to throw a figure out there until we know for sure what is going to take place with that. So we know we're getting something, but it's under review right now. That's the Medicaid cost settlement for 2019. Commissioner Waters, did you have a question?
The only comment on the Medicaid is when we originally had the consultant come in to do a study on EMS, his projection was $50 per call was going to be probably money that we could collect from North Carolina Medicare, Medicaid. That was his estimate.
If I'm doing my, roughly 1,500 calls, as we look at that, that's 75,000. So as we look at that, we have been going, we've been exceeding what that would be.
That's been several years ago, so...
Right, and again, I want us to understand, that is not a funding source we can rely on. It is totally dependent on the pool of money that's there. 2020, and I'll, I'll wrap up here and answer any other questions. Again, we're carrying the same staff. If you look at the original approved budget to the year-to-date expended, we finally had one of those negatives. So you see that we were actually under budget $68,886, and that's total budget as we look at it. Again, we had EMS billing income of $609,457, and it's not been the time to apply for that Medicaid cost settlement yet. We will be applying for it as soon as we can. So I'd be glad to answer any other questions for you.
Any discussion? Can you move forward? Do you want to go to the animal?
We're good, okay. Chief Lassiter did send me a resignation this morning. It was personal, personal slash medical in nature from our newest employee. It was the, the position in which I requested from you last several months ago that we were able to fill. With it only being four staff, one of those being, being the chief, we were worried if we didn't get it in today, it would be at least two months before we actually were able to hire somebody by the time we get to the next commissioners' meeting, advertise and get that person on board. The real worry is, they pull call 24/7, and that puts one of two officers on call every other week, and the chief is always on call when we look at that. And we're worried about any kind of sickness, vacation, or anything. It really puts the department in a bind. So I'm just requesting that we're able to fill a vacant full-time position for animal control.
Is there a motion?
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, seven zero, motion passed. Thank you, Carney.
Thank you very much.
Christina.
The first item that I have for you this evening, the agenda title is Health and Safety Project Funding. Management has identified two projects that would improve the resiliency and continuity of county operations during times of local power outages, and may reduce the number of employee absences. Listed below are brief descriptions of the projects and estimates of their cost. If approved, funding would come from fund balance that was generated by the receipt of CARES Act funding. The first item is regarding standby generators for the administrative building, the maintenance shop, as well as the financial services building. These three buildings do not have standby generators, so in times of electrical outages, continuity of operations are not allowed to continue, so payroll is unable to continue, checks cannot be written. allowed to continue. So payroll is unable to continue, checks cannot be written, things of that nature. So this is something that has been discussed various times during budget workshops and during other budget sessions, but it has never been brought forward during the normal budgetary process. But again, due to available funding, we thought that perhaps this would be time to take another look at this particular project. Based upon the, the needs of the buildings, we would be looking at 160 watt KW generator, 170 KW generator. We would be combining electrical feeds at the two buildings and the total project cost. At the time that the agenda book was put together, the total project cost was estimated at $185,000. Since that time, we have requested proposals from three different electrical contractors. However, only two electrical contractors took the time to come in to look at the buildings and only one contractor submitted a bid. But based upon that bid, the estimated project cost would be decreased to $177,000 and that would include contingency. The actual bid was 162,680 and that was by Wilson Roads Electrical Contractors out of Greenville. That's the same company that installed the generator for the Seaboard Building as well as the last two projects, generator projects for the Water Department. And so again, that would also give us a contingency that would allow us to upgrade the gas meter at the two buildings as well. Any questions regarding? Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
The, are there other buildings in the county that could use the same kind of backup?
The Health Department does not have a generator. However, there, there's been a grant funding that has been requested for that and the manager may be able to give an update on that. I know that we thought that we were really close to receiving that funding, but I don't believe we've gotten final notification.
We have not gotten final notification on that. We have submitted that as a FEMA hazard mitigation because of the Health Department. We were given some information. They thought that would be a, a good grant to be funded. If it is not, we would probably come back to you and, and look at additional CARES money offset for that as well.
Uh, we, we still have additional CARES money?
We do.
Well, yeah, if there's some other buildings in the county that could use this, you know, we, we really need to take a look at those while you've got the money and before we can find rat holes to put it down. Simple as that. You come back to us with a list of other buildings in the county that we should, that generators would help us operate during hazardous times?
Oh, I can give you a list of those off the top. I mean, I know the buildings pretty well. So DSS does not have a generator. I can go around the property here. The old jail does not have a generator. Farm Services does not have a generator. I'm sorry? That, that is?
Well, you know, there may be a school somewhere that could be used in a hurricane that could maybe use a generator.
Now, I cannot speak to school buildings.
But we need to, if we, if we got, if we've still got CARES money, we need to take a look at how to, how to use it. And in my mind, this is a good place to use it. If you can come back after this event with some more places to put CARES money of this same order would be great.
Okay.
Christina, you got, you've got the capital expenditure list that we've talked about before?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is stuff on that list that ought to be addressed to? And is that higher in priority than maybe some of this? I'm just asking, you know? I mean, we know we got some buildings that are not in great shape.
Yes, sir. I, I agree. There are definitely, there, there are many, many items that, that need to be addressed. I would agree with that. Yes, sir.
So I guess maybe we needed to be a more holistic view of this thing in terms of what the priorities of the county are and, and try to meet the most urgent ones.
What I would suggest to you is that, and we can certainly do that, what we've tried to do with CARES money is look at things, you know, when we talked to the board about receiving the CARES money, we were doing a real simple, easy reimbursement from the state. We were going to reimburse medical and public safety salaries so that it was a clean reimbursement from the state. That in turn created fund balance for us that we could use for, for proper, for opportunities like this. So our goal was to try to stay generally within those same kind of safety projects so that we were doing public safety things, being able to have continuity operations. The administrative building is actually used now as a backup EOC. The maintenance building is one that if we have an event, our maintenance guys can't even good work. They can't even use the equipment that's there because the building's not working. What? We have two people. Yeah, we, we need a few more people too, but we'll get to that in budget time.
Backing up CARES money for that, I'll make that request.
And I think we owe it to the taxpayer to make sure that we're spending it in the most judicious way.
I would agree to you that we ought to make sure that we're doing it the right way, but I don't think we ought to be replacing roofs with it. I think that that's an obligation that the board has. I think this is a one-time expenditure that would provide for continuity operations and safety and those kind of things related to it. But, but I don't think we should be offsetting maintenance funds with this money. I, I don't think that's what, I don't think that's the, the goal of those funds.
Mr. Waters?
Thank you. If I remember correctly, we got $2 million in CARES money and 500 or 25, 25% had to go to the seven municipalities. So we got one and a half million. Is that right, Brian? But I, I know, I think you were already spending some money for some of these improvements with countertops and the, and the shields, the glass shields. What, what I would like to see is some kind of proposed budget for the one and a half million before we jump in and start spending, you know, 175 here and 180 over there.
I'd approve the request tonight with the idea that they come back with the rest of the budget because I think we'd probably approve these things anyway.
But I, I guess my question is, I don't know how much we've already spent on some of these modifications within buildings.
I'm sorry. How, how soon can they do that, Christina?
The generator?
Yeah.
The lead time on generators right now is what's kind of iffy. They hope that it would, that the lead time with the generator would be, because the smaller size would be less than 12 weeks. So we're hoping that with it being October, that they would be installed by the end of January.
So there's really no urgency since hurricane season is going to be over?
It would be ice storms.
Okay.
I mean hurricanes have been into the ice.
Brian, you have a number?
I, I do. So the CARES Act funding that we received was $1,926,664. The municipal portion of that was 481,666, leaving the county $1,444,998. Of that, you have committed or spent $50,000 for the Health Department additional building. You have spent $34,415 for the DSS equipment at the last meeting. If you approve $185,000 for generators and $170,000 for the HVAC equipment, and if you, if you agree to fund the broadband grant piece at half a million, that will leave you $505,583.
Is there a motion? Do we, we didn't have a motion to advocate? Is there a second? Discussion? Hall in favor, raise your right hand. 7-0, motion passes. Okay, Christina.
Can I also, and I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, because I said that we had asked for three proposals. We only received one. Can included in that proposal, can there also be the recommendation to make that award to Wilson Roads? Yes, I do.
You want to amend that?
No. No, they are not.
Okay. Do you advocate what the amendment is? Hall in favor, raise your right hand. 7-0, motion passes. Okay, Christina.
The second item is installation of UV lights and ionizers in existing HVAC units. Due to COVID-19, there's an increased awareness of building the air quality and filtration systems available for HVAC systems. Many school systems, commercial businesses and government agencies have chosen to invest in technologies that help to filter and clean the air that circulates in the buildings. Excuse me. Beaufort Community College has used similar systems for many years with good results. The installations of UV lights and ionizers are proposed for the existing HVAC units of Beaufort County's buildings. Product informations on both systems are attached in your agenda books. Life expectancies of the UV lights is approximately five years and the ionizer's life expectancy is the life of the unit. Approximately 19 buildings with a total of 210 units. Installation will be by the service, our service contractor, Eneco East. And the total cost is $169,335.
I'll second.
Discussion? Okay, Sam.
Yes, sir.
John?
Um, I went online and this is regulated by the FDA for medical purposes. The FDA's conclusion is that however, currently there is limited data published about the wavelength dose and duration of UVC radiation required to inactivate the SARS, SARS virus. I, you know, I, I don't think we ought to be spending money. We don't know it's going to even work. I know that the manufacturer's going to tell you it's going to work.
Yes, sir.
Okay. He's not going to say something that he don't think works.
Yes, sir. Wes Overman and I have spent quite a bit of time the past couple of weeks reviewing this information. And as you can see from the information that's included in your book, there's a lot of information that's out there. And we, we went back and forth on whether to include this information or not. And Commissioner Waters may speak on this because I know you had discussions with the, the facilities personnel at Beaufort County, or Beaufort Community College regarding their HVAC systems as well. But people that, with COVID-19, that is the statement that you have is regarding that they are unsure. But that there are documented cases regarding staff, MERSA, ECOLA, other airborne mold spores and other things where there, there is proven documentation as far as UV lights and benefits in using UV lights and HVAC systems. So again, hospitals, other commercial buildings do use this type of system in their HVAC systems. And again, many more people are going to it to use it. So it's...
Commissioner Waters?
I sat on the maintenance committee out of the college. And I think it was two or three years ago, in the library, we had a big problem with mold. And in some of the real old, old books, it was beginning to deteriorate and eat the paper. And it was within 30 or 60 days after they installed this equipment that it stopped. I think what John is saying is true. There, there is a dispute about on the, you know, the current virus that we, we're talking about every day. But I think the other benefits affect, you know, the employees and customers and people that are coming into the building. It may not stop somebody from catching that, but I think the benefits on mold is probably a big thing.
I believe that there are other benefits that can be had with installing these systems in the buildings. And there are also going to be some other items. We did HVAC duct cleaning in the courthouse as part of the jail locking, locking upgrade, if you recall that. We did that in the first floor and we're going to do that on the first and second floor of the courthouse. And looking at the, the improvement that was made after the contractor came in and cleaned those ducts, it was, it was pretty incredible. So that is definitely something that I'm looking to present in future budgets and perhaps even with some of this CARES money in the future to go in and to do in our county buildings. I just, I believe it's something that will be a benefit to the employees as well as the citizens that come into the county buildings. I believe it will definitely improve the air quality in all of the county buildings.
Christina, you said that, that it was the life expectancy of the unit?
Yes, sir.
Now, we've got some old, old, old units in this county.
Yes, sir.
Now, if you have this done next month, a month after and the unit go out, that means that the warranty is out. Or how do you recoup that?
I'm not exactly sure. Eneco East is really good that if they're able to relocate it to the new unit, they will do that.
Now, do you, are you talking about doing all the county buildings out some?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a list of the, of the age of the units?
We do. We have a spreadsheet that we keep up with all of that.
And what is the oldest one? I know I'm putting you on the spot. Just give me an estimate.
Well, I usually have a spreadsheet that I put in my annual budget every year that I used to request that we would replace every unit that was over 20 years old.
Do we have it over 20 years old?
Yes, sir.
Risk my case.
But we're, we're getting there though.
Okay.
Isn't most of this equipment installed in the ductwork anyway?
Yes, sir.
See, it's not in the, it's not in a compressor or unit. It's, it's in a ductwork. It's, it's totally separate. It could be taken down and moved somewhere else if you needed to. So you're not going to, you're not going to lose anything with it.
Any more discussion?
Yes, John. One last. School children are germ bugs. We all know that. Why did we not consider the schools? I mean, they're the, there's, that's the highest dense population in any county building.
Mr. Chairman? Basically, John, because we...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, the schools come in with their own budget. They come in with their own capital budget. And, and in my opinion, we're already throwing a lot of money away on education. And that's what I was trying to get a hold of tonight when I asked the superintendent for his state budget and his federal budget because we've never got those before. But it's the end of October and he's just finished them. So they don't have an excuse not to give them to us is why they gave them to us. And the management of the mechanical and maintenance systems in the schools is not run by a professional. It's run by a good old boy. And you do not have the level of expertise that the county has with the county engineer. I have advocated now for 10 years that we force the school system into hiring an engineer to run those systems. And they like the good old boy system. And if it's up to me sooner or later, we're going to get them in a corner. They're going to hire some professional help, John, and then we can go after them. to hire some professional help, John, and then we can go after this. But when you've got guys that are using baling wire and monkey wrenches, I don't think that they're quite qualified to get into this level of, of stuff. So I would wait until we get some professional management in that system before we go after this.
Commissioner Waters?
At the college, we do have an engineer that is supervised and has done the research on that. I, I would say from the school system's point of view, they've got $3 million. The cost is $802 per unit based on the numbers you had here. So I think that they can pick the buildings that could be a problem and, and use that money to do it.
Any more discussion? Is there a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I will oppose. Six one, motion passes. Okay, Kristin.
Next item is Republic Services North Carolina Contract Amendment Proposals. The first item is regarding the decision that was made during the September 1st Board of Commissioners meeting to place containers at three collection sites for the disposal of construction and demolition debris. The cost to collect, transport, and dispose of construction and demolition debris is not currently included in Republic Services' contract with the county. Republic proposes that a fee based on the number of halls and the distance from the transfer station be specified in the contract to pay for the cost to transport the waste. The proposed rate per site is shown in the attached email from Mr. Chris Wilson dated September 21st, 2020. The rates range from $157 per hall to $198 per hall. As a gauge, the current contract includes a rate of $198 per hall for all halls over the contracted 3,468 halls per year. The disposal fee and tipping fees will be the same as municipal solid waste as referenced in the contract in Sections 5.71 and 5.73. The attached budget amendment reflects the following. An assumption at Yatesville to be three halls per week of the 40-yard C and D container, Buck Jones, two halls per week, and River Road, three halls per week. Yatesville, the assumption is the disposal is that each hall will weigh four tons, and again, using the same number of halls per week. There's 39 weeks from now until the end of the fiscal year, so until the end of June, 39 weeks total. So that gives a total of the budget amendment of 40, also, I'm sorry, includes an offset of an estimated 50% of the tonnage, thinking that the tonnage would be offset from what would typically go into the convenience sites will now be going into the C and D containers of 50% of that tonnage. So the budget amendment is for $47,873.28.
Mr. Chairman. Maybe I got lost in the shuffle when we were talking about this, but I thought we were simply shifting tonnage from one place to another. I didn't realize that we were, that we were voting to increase the tonnage that went through these things. And if we are increasing the tonnage, is this contractor tonnage that we're talking about? I think Commissioner Waters made those motions, was that your intention?
What I was trying to do was find three locations where people could continue to take small stuff. My contention is our tonnage was already there. We were already paying for that. And I don't, I don't follow this theory here. Now, if it means, if it means a budget amendment of $150,000, then I'm going to backdry. I mean, I'm not that stupid. I may look that way, but we, as far as I'm concerned, we were already, we were already taking this stuff. This is not, this is not tonnage in halls on top of what we were already doing. We were increasing the tonnage, I thought we were simply shifting it from one place to the other.
And I think the, the reason for shifting it was it would reduce the stuff that was coming into places like Aurora from outside. Because that...
The issue is something was labeled "construction and demolition debris." Construction and demolition debris was never supposed to be going to the, the collection sites. Construction and demolition debris, the, the collection sites are for residential waste only. So when something was labeled to say "construction and demolition debris" are to be accepted at Yatesville, Buck Jones, and River Road, that is a new type of waste that is accepted at those three sites. So construction and demolition debris is a, is a new, new type of waste. That's in addition to, MSW is one type of waste. Recycling is another type of waste. Bulk is another type of waste. C and D is another type of waste. That construction and demolition debris is a totally separate waste string.
But our contract covers the number of halls, and it covers the tonnage part, the transfer from the, from the convenience site to Flanders.
Yes.
Now, we don't, we don't have separate stuff in our contract for the other goods. This is the only one that Republic has come back on. But when you read the contract, I mean, we don't single out anybody. Now, if, if they're not, if we're not supposed to be handling C and D, and it needs to have special, I understand that. But why doesn't our contract not specify so much for the other ones and break it down?
What do you mean for the others?
We, I mean, it, we pay two charges. We pay per load. That's the same thing, whether it's white goods or whether it's vegetable. We pay the, we pay the in-canny transfer fee on everything. C and D's the same way. And then we do the tipping fee at the landfill. And that's for everything that goes to the landfill. But our contract does not break this A into the other categories that we've got.
That's true. But the C and, C and D is totally, the, again, C and D, the, is just not meant to be at the convenience sites, and the, I wish I did not bring the contract.
Well, what you're saying is we created a new category of trash.
Yes.
And when we created that new category, now, the haulers are saying, well, you've got a new category, so now we have to be paid for that too. And that's what's going on here, so, you know.
Since, over the years, we've been taking C and D wrongly.
Correct.
And it's been disposed of wrongly.
Correct.
We've been paying for tipping fee, and we've been paying for hauling, even though it is a new category.
Correct.
Wouldn't we have a reduction in those other areas to offset the C and D?
We're hoping.
But probably won't be as much, but it may be some, right?
Right.
Okay, just want to get that straight.
That's what the 50% is.
Right.
That's the assumption.
Just, just remember, though, we've always discouraged, C and D has made its way into the bulk, into the bulk waste. And it started getting growing, you know, remember we talked last time, one two-by-four turned into four, turned into eight, turned into 20? And it was making it to the bulk side. Then when we said, we're not supposed to be taking C and D, then there was an outrage that I can't throw away my two-by-fours. Well, the board then said, okay, we're going to make a provision for C and D. You said C and D is not acceptable. My guess is your volume on C and D is going to go up. And, and it's going to go up by more than what we were discouraging going in the bulk. I think people are going to say, oh, great, wonderful, I can now throw my C and D away. And, and when you say C and D, we're talking lumber, we're talking brick, we're talking, we're talking heavy stuff. So I, I'm hoping that there's some offset, but I'm afraid the offset, the what was going in the bulk, we were keeping out, I think more people are going to bring more now that you said you were going to take it.
Well, I, I think the manager's right. The best discussion that we had on this, I think, was the one where we said C and D was never supposed to be in here to begin with. We don't mind if Joe does a small job, and he can get it into trash bags or whatever to toss it, that's fine, but there's not going to be that much stuff. But a contractor, or anybody that tears a building down, a tobacco barn down, anything else that wants to get rid of it, they need to pay to have it hauled to the proper place to dispose of it, because now you have moved from household waste into commercial waste. And that's a whole different ballgame. You know, I'd like, Frankie, if you will, and I'd like to just go back to where we were before and discourage C and D and say, look, if you, if you do a small kitchen job and you've got four pieces of bad sheet rock, and you break it up and put it into a bag and whatever, that's fine, because contractors not going to bag the stuff and do all of this stuff. But if you can afford, for what it costs to remodel a kitchen today, if you can afford to remodel a kitchen, you can afford an extra few hundred dollars to dispose of the waste.
I, I don't have any problems backing up, because I'm not going to sit here and vote to increase the budget by $150,000. We, we had some discussion in one of our solid waste committee meetings about the contractor's bag that you can buy at, like at Lowe's, heavy duty, that anything that they could cut up and put in there was fine, as long as it was not shingles, I think was maybe the way the discussion went.
Which, and of course, the, the site attendant always has the right to inspect. And that's, that's the other option, is that anything, even though it comes in a bag, the site attendant can always ask if, if it appears that it is a bundle of shingles that someone has in there, and they're having a difficult time picking it up, the site attendant always has the right to ask the people to open it up to see what's in the bag.
Part of this is probably education. So if we make this change, and we're going to allow people to put two-by-fours cut up into bags, how do we educate people? So we don't put the site attendants in a competition situation. I think Republic will help us.
They will.
Okay? But I, but I think we've got to make that effort.
Let me jump ahead to an item that I have, this later on the agenda, that I think applies to this, and that is a report to what's going on at the, at the various roll-offs. And I think to solve my problem with that is that we should ask Republic to get us a copy of their attendance manual. And the people that work at these sites have a manual, and it's got the rules and regulations that they operate under. And we need, and it might help us to ask Republic to get us an updated copy of that, so we can all see what's really supposed to be going on at sites, and what the authority of, of the attendant has. And we also maybe need to take a look at bolstering the attendance some way that we could help in enforcing this.
They do have a, a site attendant handbook, there's actually a handbook that's attached to their contract, that's an appendix to their contract.
Yeah, I think contractors coming in has always been, has been the problem. They just come in and tell them that we was going to go to one axle, two axles, and now we're into something else.
Some of the property owners have said, oh, you're not a contractor, you can go down there and tell them it's mine. Well, it's still a load of construction debris.
Do, do you need a motion to remove what we did last time?
I would say yes, yes, sir.
Well, I would, I would make a motion that we, we back up and go back to our original.
I'll second that.
Got a motion or a second, is any discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes. Okay, Kristin.
Second item is regarding daylight savings time. The collection sites currently operate until 7:00 PM, seven days a week, year-round. County staff and Republic Services request that the sites close at 6:00 PM when not in daylight savings time. Lighting is low in many of the areas of the sites, and the safety of the residents and the attendants is a concern. Traffic is also very slow from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM during the winter hours. This change will result in an annual savings of $9,538.20.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I have problems every time we, we operate 11 hours part of the year and then 12 hours the other one. What, what's wrong with operating 11 hours year-round?
I think we are...
I mean, 11, 11 hours allows people, I mean, this is 11 hours. Right now, it's six days a week, plus part of Sunday. I would, I would like to amend the motion and limit to 11 hours every day. And I don't care whether you start at 7:00 and go to 6:00, or whether you start at 8:00 and go to 7:00, year-round.
That's true, yeah.
Eight o'clock, if you sit, go from, go to 7:00. If that's the problem that you're having because of traffic and hazards because of poor lighting, it's...
Commissioner Waters, I think one of the challenges, I think one of the challenges you would face from, from the public is that if you cut it back to 11 hours all the time, then that would be currently, say, 7:00 to 6:00. And it would only give people an hour, most folks get off work at 5:00. It would only give them an hour, and if they're, if they're coming back home to try to get something to the convenience site, it would force them to go on the weekend, which maybe you want to do. But, but I think when you start, the, the safety concern is what we have about traffic, looking at the volumes and then looking at the safety piece of that, so that was the reason for the change.
Be made here, is you may have track, more trash beside the road if you cut the hours back. I understand what you're talking about, Commissioner Waters, but I'd probably say to do, probably feel better if we went with the proposal. I don't have a problem cutting hours back, people can get used to it, but I, you're going to have some blowback.
I had a person the night, I asked, I said, when do you, when do you take yours? And the person said, I take mine between 6:00 and 7:00. I said, have you ever tried to get up early and take it between 7:00 and 8:00 before you get to work? And the person said, no, I prefer to do it after work. So we could start at 8:00.
Do we have a motion? And it was a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, seven zero, motion passes. Thank you, Katie.
And the third item is regarding, also regarding the collection sites. The collection sites, first let me preface this. When the Solid Waste Committee was in, in service, again, we were looking at different options and different ways to reduce costs and different ways to change the operation. So what I'm going to read now is, is a proposal and just one of the, one of many small changes that may potentially be done. We've often talked about how the solid waste program is just such a, a large problem. And sometimes it's like the old adage, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? So that's kind of what the premise of, I'm just, in the next few months, just presenting small changes to look at individual pieces, instead of trying to look at the overall program. Maybe if we just look at individual pieces, maybe we can start making some small changes that will, when we combine them all together, have a much larger effect. So the collection sites currently operate seven days a week. Republic Services has paid a monthly fee to operate the collection sites. Shown below is a proposal to reduce hours of operation of the collection sites based on the tonnage received at each of the sites. By closing the sites for four days, this would allow Republic Services to schedule maintenance on equipment as well as the facilities. It would also allow attendants to be present at the sites for up to four hours per week to clean the sites, including picking up trash, sweeping, raking, and making repairs without having to stop to direct traffic and assist customers. During daylight savings times, 592 hours would be allocated weekly for the operation of the 10 collection sites. During normal time, 543 hours. During normal time, five hundred forty-three hours would be allocated weekly for the operation of the ten collection sites. If approved, this proposal would result in an annual savings of seventy-one thousand one hundred forty-two dollars and eighty cents. What you'll see listed below that is a chart that lists each of the collection sites listed in order, showing the number of loads that were collected at each of the sites in 2019. So listed at the top was Ransomville, which had a total number of loads in one calendar year of a hundred and twenty-five, down to River Road, which had one thousand two hundred and eighty. So based upon that, we went through and did a schedule, closing sites, Ransomville, Landfill Gate, Buck Jones, and Five Points would be open four days a week. Yatesville, Pantego, and Aurora would be open five days a week. And Cherry Run, Chaco Innity, and River Road would be open six days a week. So again, as you go through, looking at this, you'll see that the sites are, I'll show the days that they're closed, show, show the days that are open. All of the sites would be opened on Saturday. Many of the sites would be opened on Friday. You would see that there are only, seven would be open, three would be closed. On Sunday, four would be closed and six would be open. As you're going through and looking at the different sites, part of the, the process in determining the sites that would be closed and the sites that would be open, it was not an easy task, I can assure you. But what we looked at, we tried very hard that if a site was closed, the adjacent sites or the two adjacent sites would be open. So that if River Road is closed, the Cherry Run site was open. If you're looking at Chaco Innity, if the Chaco Innity site is closed, the Buck Jones site was open. If Buck Jones was closed, the Aurora site, the Chaco Innity site were open. So I'm not saying that it's perfect, but it's very difficult the way that our convenience sites are laid out geographically. But again, between myself, Wes, Nikki, looking at it, and also Nikki contributed a lot to this as far as how his trucks were running, how he would empty the sites and clear the sites on the weekends, and how he would do all of that. So this is just a proposal. We all know that we get complaints about the convenience sites, and this is just a proposal to try to get the convenience sites to be run more efficiently, to try to get the containers and the trucks to be able to empty the containers, to give them more time to be able to catch up and to empty them and for the site attendants to clean the sites and to have them more presentable. So this is a proposal that, that we are making for your comments and recommendations and discussion, yes?
Did you say, do, do all this chess play, you only save seventy-one thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. And there's, and, and the reason.
Well, let me say this, I, I know you got a reason, but let me say this. I must still, one of my colleagues saying, some juice just ain't worth the squeeze.
I, I don't disagree, I understand where you're coming from. It, it's not a lot, but if you compare it over the past five years, and if you do seventy thousand dollars times five, and you're looking at, we could have made some capital improvements with, with those funds.
Commissioner Waters?
Christina, I looked at if you closed every site only one day, the savings would be thirty-three thousand and some change. Uh, I'm not opposed to closing every site one day a week and you guys choosing the day, but I am opposed to right now closing any of them beyond one day a week. I think two and three days, that may come, but I don't think we're there yet. I think we need to chew off a little bit at a time.
Why, why don't we just pretend we're in the restaurant business and close them all on Monday? I mean, what's going to happen to you if this?
I thought about that, but the problem is we do that, if you close them all on the same day, you're defeating the purpose of having Republic Services being able to go and to, to maintain their equipment and to be able to empty their boxes.
Because they can't get into all the sites.
Get to all of the sites.
I got you. Okay, well, that makes sense. But you know, that's one of the things you do. The problem with this is that if this were to pass, uh, you know, I would, I would insist that we have a sign painted, large letters at each site, clearly visible, that tells the hours of operation.
We would definitely do that, and that's something that, especially now with the new hours for daylight savings time, and if this is a change, then we would definitely have new signage. I think new signage is something everyone agrees is needed at all of the sites.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion that we close each site one day, one day per week.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Discussion.
I think the signs are going to cost more than what you're going to save.
We need, we need the signs anyway.
Closing one day a week rather than what you're looking at now, I mean, we actually save mathematically thirty-three thousand dollars rather than, you know, does it work that way? Because I, I understand what you're doing here, it almost seems like it's a goddamn source, and, and it makes sense. Will this other way, the plan you're proposing, make sense?
I did not run the numbers that Commissioner Waters ran, so I do not know. The exact number, we will save some amount of money. I do not know the exact amount, it will be very small. It surprises me that we would save half of that amount because we're not going to be close that total amount, but.
Christina, the, the number is, if you add all these up that you have, it's twenty-one days. And if you do a percentage of it, ten days, that's where the thirty-three thousand comes from.
Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I think you're probably getting something out of this that's not that measurable. If you close the sites on the schedule that Commissioner Waters has proposed, I think the public is maybe happier in the end because they're not going to arrive as much at the site with the bins full and I've called them for three days and they won't come and empty the bins. I think you're going to provide better service to the public by closing them. And when you get there and the sites are, are cleaner than they are now and things are better arranged and the bins have been emptied, uh, uh, I think that the public will be a little happier with it once they get into it. We will provide better service by doing this, I do believe.
That is our hope, but it's still, just by closing one day a week, it's still not going to fix everything because again, all of the containers will be full on Monday morning. I don't care which convenience sites you go to, if you go on Monday morning, the bins will be full.
Close one day a week, Republic should be able to manage that better than they're managing it now because now it's a trot every day.
But I can't close them all on Monday.
I understand.
Commissioner Waters?
The, the complaint that Brian and I got when we went to the, I guess you would call it a public hearing in Pamlico Beach, uh, when we, when we closed Pamlico Beach, uh, and this was just before Christmas, so Brian and I didn't get a Christmas present from the group. They, they said, have you, have you considered closing the site not as many hours during the day and closing the site and not having it open seven days? So I think everybody understands with all the publicity we've got on the convenience sites, that we've got to do something, and I think that they're asking us to make some changes in what we do to try to cut some costs. And I agree, it's, it's small change, but you got to start someplace. It's a service and when you start pulling it away, you know, people are going to get upset. But hopefully they will accept the change in the hours and being closed one day per week.
Let's, let's try it. All of, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Alls in favor, raise your right hand. Alls opposed, six one, motion passes.
Commissioner Richardson, you had the convenience site information, is that?
Well, I think that we pretty much answered this when I brought it up before I go. What, what would satisfy me is based upon our votes tonight, if, if the people who are doing Republic were to update their manual and get us the manual, I think it would give me the information that I want, plus it would give us a chance to review it and maybe comment on it. So I would be very satisfied with that.
Need any action, or we okay?
No.
Yeah.
And the next item too.
Yeah, we will.
The jail. Yeah, short report. There were some minor adjustments that were made on Thursday, September 10th and Friday, September 11th. Technicians from MTS did return to the Beaufort County Detention Center to make some adjustments on, I believe it was four or five doors. They came in on Thursday, they worked with the shift that was working at that time. I think they stayed through after shift change, through the six PM shift, and then they spent the night, and then they came back again in the morning so that they worked with another shift. So they were actually there with three different shifts to, to work with the shifts, to talk to them about how the doors were operating. One of the, um, main features is that the doors, for so many years, habit was that you open the door and you close the door. At these doors, you really need to be hands off. You just let the door open and you let the door close. So once that was explained to everyone, we haven't had any questions or any concerns with the doors, with those particular doors since that time, so we haven't had any other maintenance calls or anything with that. The other key locks, again, it was 12 weeks from the time that they finished, received an email today from MTS, they're still waiting on the exact delivery time, but we're expecting sometime this month that they will be back to make the final changes. So it'll either be this month or the first of next month.
All right, I'll put you on the spot. Have you personally seen prisoners standing in sewage? Have you personally seen roaches? Have you personally seen bugs in food? Or any of the accusations that have been made earlier by Mrs. Mish? Have you seen that in our jail?
Can you repeat those again?
This is easy. Have you personally seen roaches, prisoners standing in sewage, uh, uh, or bugs in food in our jail?
I have not seen bugs in food. I have seen bugs, um, and I have not seen inmates standing in sewer, but I have seen sewer in the jail because it's public works and sometimes sewer backs up, so, but, yes. That's it.
Thank you, Christina. Chief Deputy Charlie Rose.
I've got a letter from the sheriff that you've already received, but for the public, I'm going to read that to you. And then I've got a, another couple of comments, um, but I'll try to be as brief as I can. So, reference of the memo as to funding the deputy sheriff positions. During the 2020-21 budget process, the Beaufort County Commissioners advised the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office that they were going to temporarily freeze funding from the budget for five deputy sheriff positions because of anticipated revenue shortages due to COVID-19. However, to date, there has not been any agency or department under the county's supervision or control that has had any reduction in personnel or a budget funding reduction this year. Only the office of the sheriff, that is constitutionally and statutorily independent from the control of the county, and relies on the taxpayers through the county for funding for our day-to-day operations that's had any personnel defunded by the Commissioners. There is no evidence currently that there is a budget shortfall. In fact, sales tax numbers are higher than they have been in the past few years. Even though documentation from the county still shows that the five positions were frozen, we have recently been advised by the county verbally that the positions have been abolished and no longer exist. The sheriff would like a public statement from each Commissioner and a vote of the board to express each Commissioner's support, non-support, and/or reasoning behind the defunding of the positions from the sheriff's office. We are not asking for new positions or any additional funding, we are asking to simply fill positions that were already in our budget that have been defunded by the Commissioners for political reasons. Sheriff Ernie Coleman.
In the budget, as, as far as things go, I've been the budget officer and the, for the most part, the designated liaison for the sheriff to the Commissioners for the entire time that Sheriff Coleman has been sheriff. And it's been, it's been interesting. I've, you know, personally experienced a lot of professional highs and lows in dealing with that position. And the budget, each budget year in the process, the negotiations are, are, you know, they're engaging, sometimes entertaining, and sometimes they, they are very tough. The, the, the time that I spend with, with county employees, like the county manager and the finance officer, has been, has been very good and very positive. Every exchange, every year is positive, and, and we want to keep that going. Even though this last fiscal year, I flat out will say that the, the professional and probably personal relationship between either myself and some Commissioners have been strained, but the same thing between myself and the, and the county manager. Even though between all of those things, we try, we're going to maintain the most professional posture and at the very least, we're going to be collegial with each other, just like I'm going to do tonight. In the budget, going into this year, there was a lot of discussion. You know, last year, there were some moves that were made, there were some payroll that was adjusted that needed to be adjusted. You know, flat out, I don't know if anybody's experienced or not, but, uh, right now, you know, it's pretty tough to be a law enforcement officer in anywhere in the world, in the United States, and that relates down to Beaufort County. There is fewer people that are going to BLET, basic law enforcement training that want to get into law enforcement. I've got a 16-year-old son that wants to ask me questions all the time about law enforcement, and I'm telling him to go be a pilot. Go in the military, learn how to fly planes, be a pilot, don't worry about law enforcement. And I know that there's a lot of folks that are, that are having those same conversations. In this year's budget discussions, because of those, those increases and changes in pay, there was a lot of discussion back and forth on neutral budget moving forward, neutral budget moving forward, and things of that nature. And even though we didn't particularly want to do that, because the front end of that, we sort of dragged the Commissioners begrudgingly. If it was left to the Commissioners' own decisions, we, none of those things would have, would have happened. We had to maneuver and find loopholes and work policies and procedures and protocols that already exist by the Commissioners and the county government sort of against you to get those things going on. And in the budget process, you know, we tried our best to make sure that we weren't going to be looking at punitive measures against the sheriff's office and, and by extension the county. And that's where the negotiation led to frozen positions. Well, the whole point of a frozen position and a negotiation that is one fiscal year means that sometime within that fiscal year, we are going to ask for those positions to be thawed, and that should have been understood from the very beginning. But now in conversations that we're having and, and, and emails that are going back and forth between HR, things have gone from frozen, even though I have it documented in budget information. You know, you've got the county ordinance that comes out. You know, that is the budget document. Commissioner Hood Richardson, every year talks about the budget ordinance being the budget, that the book that goes along with it is more informational and educational, but the budget ordinance is the budget. And in that, it does say that the sheriff has 102 positions to fill, even though after the budget was passed, we still have to come in and sort of argue our way through making sure that we can get those positions filled up to 102, even though in comparison sake, DSS had a request a day for a special, a technology specialist position, not one question. They had three full-time equivalents. We had one looking to get two, but not one question and a discussion about whether that person was necessary to do the functions of their job when they're asking to fill a technology specialist position that already exists. And that was in tonight's meeting, tonight's meeting. Also in tonight's- meeting, tonight's meeting. Also, in tonight's meeting, we heard things of CARES Act, CARES Act, CARES Act, and windfall, windfall. You don't have a windfall when you're talking about the county being broke, busted, and disgusted, which ought to be the Beaufort County motto when it talks about the, what the counties looking to do with each other. And then, in the schedule of where we are, I'm glad that we're on the agenda after our discussion about how and where we're going to throw our trash away, because after that, then this ought to be very simple to talk about. So, frozen positions. We've got documentation throughout the year to the point that the positions are frozen. We knew that we were going to be asking for these positions to be thawed throughout the course of the year. For us to do that, some of the Commissioners, I can't even remember who during that discussion says, "Well, I don't even want to hear about it until about January." So, even in the discussions before they were voted on, before the budget was voted on, Commissioners knew that we were going to have this discussion again. So, when we hear abolish, when we hear do not, do not exist, the sense of urgency in coming and asking in October is twofold. One, because we do have Commissioners that are looking to get elected next year. We want to have a voice of where their support is going into that election. But then also, even if it was a non-issue and that we're looking to fill those positions, then it would be perfectly okay with the Commissioners. It takes time to fill positions, actually about 120 days. So, if we're looking at that, then if we have the ability to hire people today, it would probably take until January to get those positions recruited for and filled. So, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to explain a little bit going into it, but that, that's sort of where we are. Now, as far as the business end of things, is that I have been the budget officer and the liaison for the board for almost six years now. And that doesn't mean that it's just me. The sheriff and I have conversations almost every day when it comes to the operations of the sheriff's office. Most of the time, when I try to explain to people, I say that the sheriff is 90% political and 10% operations, and I'm the opposite. I'd be 90% operations and 10% political. But quite frankly, when you work for an elected official who happens to be the chief law enforcement officer in the, in the county, then it's 100% political and 100% operations. And me being his number two person is 100% political and 100% operations. Our budgets, throughout the course of each year since, since I have been in this position, we have done everything that we can to make sure that we are good stewards of the money that is appropriated for the sheriff's office, to the tune of, in 2020, the surplus that went back to the county coffers was about $574,000. That was the audited number in the 13th month in Munis, which is the same system that finance gets theirs numbers from. You know, a lot of, a lot of moves, a lot of, a lot of things take place. The ordinance goes back to as well, as far as the functional areas that we, that we are to be held by. Well, we're actually held to a higher standard than that. We're held to the line item amount, which is not, which is not listed in that, in that budget ordinance. In 2019, the surplus that went back to the county was about $325,000. So, we, once again, we try to ask for what we need. We also try to understand what the county is going through and what they, what they are asking for and what they need through the course of our negotiations. And then we work with county staff to make sure that our budget makes sense, not just for the sheriff's office, but county-wide as well. And we do that every single year. And then even on top of that, we try to do everything that we can, that if we don't have to spend the dollar, then we don't spend the dollar. So, frozen positions, what does that actually mean? That means that we had five positions that we needed that had already been argued, already been negotiated, already been approved, already been allocated for two full fiscal years before, in the negotiations, we froze them. So, there's not an argument on whether we needed the positions or not. That should, that should be inarguable, because it was approved in the budget two years straight. So, now we're asking for help. We're asking for help. We need positions. We need them filled. They're not fake positions. They're not positions that are ghost positions, which have been heard through by Commissioner Richardson and maybe several others. These are positions that we're looking to fill. Right now, of the 102 positions, we've got 102 people. We had an opening in the jail. We've got somebody in background. We had an opening in communications. We have somebody in background. If, if they get finished through background, and I have no reason to believe that they're not, they're going to get a preconditional offer and then work through, and then at that point, we're going to have our 102 people and 102 positions. Ghost positions? Not at all. The positions that are frozen right now, and that I've been trying to get them into position number so I can have an actual word chart to give you for the past year, is four patrol spots. Four patrol spots. That's one deputy for each shift, each 12-hour shift. So, going from five deputies per shift to six, that's four of the positions. I'll remind you, 850 square miles of land, 100 square miles of water, one bridge across the river. We had an incident in Aurora not too long ago, that we had a deputy that responds after somebody had been shot and was terrorizing a neighborhood. That one deputy, if a trooper hadn't been in that area, one deputy would have been in the area handling that situation alone for at least 20 minutes, because the deputy who would have been the backup for that area was on another call in Blunts Creek. And even if they broke loose from that call and headed as fast as they could, to that deputy would have been 20 minutes until they got there. 20 minutes is a long time. 60 seconds is a long time. And if we need to sit here silently for 20 minutes just to see exactly how long that is, that's a long time. We need to guys, we need to get the guys and girls that we have working more help. The fifth position is in the schools. We have talked about the schools. We have worked so hard to get deputies in each school. For years, we worked hard to get deputies in each school. And it is backwards. It is. It's me being a law enforcement officer, it's me being a parent, it's me being a spouse to someone who works in public health. It is backwards. If we have limited officers in schools, then we're going to need to put them in the high schools, because that's where more, that's where 90% of the law enforcement tasks would be taking place in schools. But it's backwards. When you're looking at the 1%, and the real reason why we need law enforcement in schools is for the, the things like Sandy Hook. It's for the things like, that, that occurred in the south part of Florida, when you have somebody who's an assailant or a gunman that goes into a school that's full of kindergartners. If you go into a high school, that event like that, you're dealing with people who, for the most part, are adults, and they can sort of fend their way for a little bit. But when you're dealing with kindergartners, they're going to be more likely to do what they're told, even if they're being told what to do by the assailant themselves. So, we don't want to even get to the point where we are either even considering taking people out of schools after we fought so hard to do that. But quite frankly, that's part of the discussion that we've been asked over the last couple of weeks when this has come up, is, hey, if you can't get those positions, are you going to have to remove people from the schools? We don't want to. The sheriff doesn't want to. But we are statutorily obligated to answer calls and do law enforcement work in the county, in the non-incorporated areas of the county. But we also, we are the, we are the largest and most dynamic law enforcement agency in Beaufort County, bar none, inarguable. We do the drug work for Beaufort County. There's not another agency that does drug work in Beaufort County, not on the state, the state, or federal or local level. It doesn't happen. Not only that, on the state level, you know, that their funds are going more towards smaller counties and larger counties. The medium-sized counties like Beaufort County are the ones that sort of get left out of that. So, we are the agency that, that are, that are doing the work when it comes to drug work, when it comes to prevention work, when it comes to the proactive law enforcement that people expect to get done. In Beaufort County, that's being done by the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. And we are assisting the municipalities that have police departments more and more and more. Washington gets more assistance than we did four or five years ago. The town of Bellhaven, they're down to six or seven full-time sworn. We're giving them more assistance. Chalk Winity has a one or two full-time, so we're, we're answering probably 80% of the calls in Chalk Winity. And Aurora has disbanded their law enforcement. So, we are, we are spending more time and energy and efforts in Aurora for law enforcement than we have in the past. We're answering more AMS calls. Every, every call that comes out that says that there's going to be anything that could lead to CPR, a law enforcement officer, most likely a deputy, is going to be sent to that call. And we have done, we have done that. We, we, we are more than willing to help out with that. But, and we answer the calls that we go to, but that is, that is a tax and a strain on the time that we, that we have to do our jobs. Transports. We still have to transport every inmate that's out of county into county and vice versa. Our jail is better now than it was a couple of years ago, but we have not got to the point yet where we are back fully functioning and the courts are going back. We're still not doing child support court. We're still not doing a lot of these other things that are drawing, that would draw inmates into our jail, increasing the transports that we're going to do anyway. Involuntary commitments, that has, that has for years and years and years been, been a task to sheriffs to transport involuntary commitment patients out of the county to different counties throughout the state. Right now, we're seeing where counties like Washington County and counties like Hyde County will bring their involuntary commitments voluntarily to Vitent in Washington. And then if the paperwork is taken out in Washington as, as an IBC, statutorily, statutorily by law, we have to take that transport. So, not only are we going to be dealing with Beaufort County's transports, but we're dealing with Washington County's transports and Hyde's County's transports. And it's really nothing that we can do to tell the sheriffs to stop that. They found a loophole in the law, and they're taking advantage of that. So, I say all of those things just to get back to the point of, it's very important for each of the positions that we have. We're not asking for every need that we have. That could be something that could be addressed in the next budget. But for this, frozen positions, there's, there's only one reason to freeze a position during one budget year, and that's to have a discussion about thawing them before that budget year's over. And that's the discussion that I'm hoping and to have now. Is this a politically charged thing? Absolutely. Is defunded a buzzword? Absolutely. But that is where we are. And as me standing before a bunch of elected officials, you don't get any more political than that. I work for an elected official. It doesn't get more political than that. So, the timing is what the timing is. And I'm, I'm thankful for the time that you've given, and I'd be more than willing to answer any questions or hear any comments that any of the Commissioners have.
Commissioner Waters.
Chief Rose, during the budget process, I don't remember whether you came over and spent any time with us or not, but I did put away a sheet that showed those five positions. The total cost was $279,000 a year.
That's correct.
In your current budget, what will the Commissioners have to increase? What budget amendment would we have to do to cover these five?
Well, procedurally, and I may have to defer to the county manager on this. Procedurally-wise, the way that it's been done in the past is that you would have to reallocate or appropriate the five positions. And then there would have to be a budget amendment that would show the entire amount in the salaries and benefits line for that. You know, that's where I get back to when I'm talking about our budgets in the past. If money has been moved in because of the accounting, then it will show 279,000 heavy on the salaries and benefits line. But historically, I can show you where at the end of the year, we have come in with surpluses in, in all but one year. The one year that we didn't come in with a surplus was the year that we had an inmate that had a medical event, that the medical bills, before we had the insurance stop-loss policy, that those bills were close to, I think, three-quarters of a million dollars. So, I can't, and I can't, I won't make you promise. I was a promise earlier today that I won't lose you any money. I can't, I can't sit here and make you that promise, and I won't, except for to say that we've done, that if you can go back in the six years that I've come before this board, and I've told you that this is what we need to do, and this is why we need to do it, and this is what we'll do, if you can come back to me with an example of a time that I have been wrong or misled, then I would be, I'd be surprised by that.
Well, you, you referred to the Health Department and DSS. Both of those did not require any additional county funds.
Sure.
No increase in the budget.
Sure.
So, my question still is, how much do we have to increase our existing budget for the sheriff's office to handle the five positions?
On paper, it's going to be $279,000 that would be appropriated to the salaries and benefits line for your accounting practices.
Well, during the budget process, the conversation was such that we did not want to have a tax increase. And 279,000 would have caused us to have a tax increase if this had been handled during the budget workshops and during the budget request. But if I remember correctly, you told us that you were happy with the budget.
If, if happy was the word that I would use, then okay. There was a lot of things that went on during that budget process, where it was said that there was an agreement between the county manager and I, that if the, if the personnel action forms that went before the board that were within policy, within procedure, within statutes, went through like they should have gone through, then the agreement that was made between myself and the county manager was, is that we'll do everything that we can to come up with a budget-neutral budget. That was the agreement. Now, the Commissioners chose not to act. One, they didn't really have to, but the personnel action forms did not go through. And we had to find another way to do what the sheriff has the statutory authority to do. Policies, procedures, and protocols of the county government did not preclude the fact that the sheriff couldn't do that. And the answer was still no, until we found a way through the own policies of the county to get that done. Not because the Commissioners said, "Yeah, Charlie, yeah, that sounds like a good deal. We'll go along with you and the sheriff on that." We got that done, and we still went along with making sure that the budget that we put through was neutral, even after it was said through the county manager that not only would we have to reduce the budget and the number of the pay increase that we were looking for, but we also had to decrease the budget because of the project ordinance, where the money was taken out of the sheriff's budget because the jail was shut down for so long, to the tune of meals, that are normally $225,000 a year, was reduced to $115,000 that year because it was in a project ordinance to take care of the jail. That's still the sheriff's budget. That's still the sheriff's office budget, but it was removed because accounting in a, in a, a project that had to be done, not because of negligence of the sheriff or the sheriff's office, but because of decisions that have been made by this board for years and years and years going up to that. And we still did what we needed to do to come in budget-neutral. We, not only did we cut $200,000 in capital funding for vehicles that we need every single year, year in and year out, but we put, and through the negotiation, it wasn't, it wasn't like it was my idea, and my idea alone, to want to freeze positions. But that covered the $279,000 that we needed to cover, and then an additional, almost $300,000 needed to cut out because of that project ordinance that flat-out, I would say, was sort of thrown upon me, but we still did to make sure that we came in neutral. So, $279,000 was what, on paper, was what would need to be the appropriation tonight to get the five deputies, five patrol deputies, and one in the schools. And I'll even ask a question to Commissioner Langley, to the Vice Chairman. Do you remember how many deputies were on patrol in a shift when you were at the sheriff's office there?
Three.
Three. Right? And when, and, well, over 20 years ago? I had, I had discussions with retired Chief Milton Hodges. He talked about, before he was retired, that they had five deputies on a patrol shift. Now, they didn't cover 24/7 like we do now, so there was movement around. But we're not talking about something that we're just trying to come up with out of nothing. We're talking about the, the needs that we've had have been pushed off and changed and moved and put in support roles for so long, that, that we're not asking for anything that we don't need. We're not asking for anything that we didn't need two years ago, one year ago. We're trying to do it the right way. We're trying to come back like we said we would. And, and I, I hope that I've answered the questions that have been asked so far adequately. We give a surplus every year, five years out of six. Each of those would have been enough to cover what we're talking about here. We're going to do everything that we can to make sure it's this time, but I don't have a crystal ball. I can't come to you and make, and I won't make promises that I can't keep. But this is what we need, and we need it now.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one more question. We, we had originally got the school resource officers up to 14 total. We've closed the Ed Tech Center, so that frees up one.
Oh, you haven't closed the Ed Tech Center. You have, the Ed Tech Center is located at Southside High School.
So, you're telling me we have two at Southside High School?
Well, you have two schools that are operating within the same building, but you have one school resource officer that's at that campus. school resource officer that's at that campus.
So there's two.
The position for the schools would be, I've got a first sergeant and a sergeant who oversees the, the school resource officers. I've got a person who is being hired from the la, after the last meeting, the last SRO in a school is gonna be hired and put on in the, in the books and the roster within the next month. The position that would go within the schools, we would put an SRO level person in each school, and then I would have two supervisors, a first sergeant and a sergeant, that would oversee the school resource officer program, but then also be a fill-in for when we have people that are out sick, out in training, if we have positions that are open and things of that nature.
Commissioner Richardson.
So how many vacancies do you have? Let me describe what a vacancy is. If someone who's not actually sitting in the position right now, whether you've interviewed for them or not, how many vacancies do you have?
Two.
You have two vacancies right now. The need for these officers, you know, you, you took off the table that you didn't need to justify the need because the fact that they were on the, on the roster meant that we needed them. That's not true. You have to justify to the commissioners why you need these police officers. Now, I haven't had any complaints about coverage in the county. So do you, do you file monthly reports with the crime people in Raleigh or anybody else?
Crime people?
Well, the, gee, what was the guy's name that was head of that? The Secretary of Public Safety?
We have reporting that goes in through our CAD system on monthly and then yearly basis that would report the uniform crime report and IVRs that, that go through. Yes, sir. But also, just to get back to your point, I said that there wasn't really a reason for me to explain why we need the deputies because they were in the budget for two years, but then I took 20 minutes to explain why we need, but, why we need deputies in the budget.
I don't think you explained why you need these five new deputies. Can we get copies of the last three months and the last two years' annual reports?
Sure, you can go on the State Bureau of Investigation website and pull them out.
Can you get those to the commissioners as a request? Would you do that?
Sure.
Okay. We, I would like to see.
So you're, you're asking me to do something that you can do on your own?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
The, uh...
Well, I think you could do it on your own.
Well, it doesn't matter whether I could do it on my own or not, making a, you, you are the one that's in here begging for money. So beggars can't be choosers.
A windfall for money. That's right.
You, 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 you know, I would be a little bit more gracious than what you are in providing us with information, because I've seen absolutely no information to justify the need for five more deputies, and that's what I'm asking for. How many calls? How many people are going unserved? How many incidents have we had that are, are serious incidents, other than the one that you described to us, in the county? That's the kind of information that we need in order to increase the number of patrol officers, justify the need. Just saying because they're on the roster, it does not necessarily get them for you.
I, I talked about, I talked about transports. I talked about calls for service.
What are the numbers?
I talked about covering more calls in municipalities. I talked about not having federal and state help. I talked about doing the drug work in the entire county.
Well, where are the numbers to justify what you're saying?
You, you had information that we, we were gonna talk about this for almost a week, and no one question came from any commissioner about information that you would have liked that I could have had to provide for you, but you didn't, you didn't ask in advance.
Well, let me remind you, you walked in here with a, with a letter and read it from the sheriff that you could have given us before this meeting if you want to go this route. Would you mind giving that copy to the clerk so that she can get us a copy of the letter from the sheriff?
That was emailed to you at about 4:30 or 5:00 today.
This afternoon?
Yes.
Flash just before the meeting, so you don't have time to justify it. You know as well as anybody else that we're here at 5 o'clock in the afternoon. So you waited until we left our residences and our offices to send us that information.
And, and you've had the information for the meeting. You've had the information on the meeting request for almost a week, and still no phone calls, emails, smoke signals, or any form of communication between the commission and...
Well, let me ask you another thing now. You had about $300,000 of what you call surplus money from wages that had, we didn't pay because you couldn't fill positions and various other things. And that's what you were referring to a while ago, and you came to the commissioners and you wanted us to vote for you to allow you to give the sheriff's favorite deputies $5,000 and $10,000 increases, with the rest of the county employees not getting anything. And this board sat here and told you that we were not gonna vote to do that, that that was budget money, and it was to be turned back in if it wasn't spent. So you just told us the sheriff in all of his power and majesty went ahead through the county and gave those increases without the approval of this board. There is your $280,000 that you need to put these deputies on the payroll.
The sheriff acted on a pay study that the commissioners paid for, but then chose not to enact after putting all of their employees through it. The same year that the commissioner said that you didn't have money to do the $1.6 million to pay for the entire study, more than 1.9 millions went back to the general fund balance from the, from the surplus of the budget.
Yo, Charlie, you started...
So in a year that you said that you didn't have the money, more than enough money to pay for the entire cost of what the pay study would do, you went from allocated or appropriated money, and that money went back to the general fund balance to look, to raise it from about 17 million to 19 million. That is, as you like to say it, that is taxpayers' money that the county has, in your words, held hostage.
Well...
You could have taken care of the need that you thought was a need because you got a pay study done, and then you acted to do nothing as a commission.
Charlie, let me tell you something. If you want to get the things that you're talking about done the way that you want it done, this board makes policy decisions to protect the public and protect the public's money.
Sure.
You need to run for county commissioner. Because we set the policy, and if you want to start setting the policy and you want to start telling commissioners what to do, then you need to pony up and register and run for public office, because that's exactly how it works.
I'm a taxpaying landowner, a constituent of every commissioner in Beaufort County because of select, because of limited voting. I don't need to be a commissioner to tell you how to do your job. I get that because I'm a citizen of America. I'm a citizen of Beaufort County. So congratulations, you're gonna get my opinion, you're gonna get the elected sheriff's opinion, and come election, I hope that you'll get the, the voting electrics opinion on an individual's decision, like yourself, you're not the board. You know, my predecessor sheriff, the sheriff that I had for 10 years, called you 25% of a bad decision because you were one vote that usually led to a bad decision.
Well, you know, you're, you've been highly political since you've been in here. You've tried to take ownership of the county's tax money by saying that because property taxes, because sales taxes have increased, and we have more money than we had before, that somehow you're entitled to part of it. You're not. This board sets policy, you're not entitled to any of it, no more than any other citizen of Beaufort County is entitled to it. Just because revenues go up doesn't mean we're gonna divide it. That's what the sheriff did with the so-called surplus money that he had, that he had in his budget that he could have hired these five people with, but he took it on his own and gave it away.
To take care of his employees.
And now you're wanting another $300,000, again, spurging money, and you have not yet justified the need for even one more deputy.
John, you got a question?
I'm, I don't have the history here that you do with, with the sheriff. I know, because I go to meetings in Aurora about once a month, that they're desperate for more representation in Aurora. That they don't have the service in Aurora, that, that, that they, they feel is, is deserving as taxpayers. I want to also remind us that in June 1st, we passed this resolution, and you voted. Let it be resolved that Beaufort County's commissioners are, are resolved to protect the civil liberties of all citizens by enforcing all of our laws, thereby promising the Beaufort County sheriff, the commissioners' full support. So my, my, my position is that I don't have this, this individual grudge going back, that we did have 107 headcount in the sheriff's department a year ago. They were out there policing. We don't have that.
That's not true. He had a, he had that many people on the payroll, but he never could hire enough people to fill his vacancies. That is what the five...
Everybody that came in here today had problems with people.
It was about 18 months that we were completely full.
So...
18 months.
And these aren't positions that are gonna be putting butts in chairs behind a desk. These are putting boots on the ground, and that's what I think the people of this county deserve.
John, if I remember correctly, that motion failed, didn't it?
No, it passed.
It passed?
It passed. Four to two.
Okay.
And you voted yes.
Well, let me say this, you know, we have to separate the need for public safety in supporting police from the running of the sheriff's department. The two are not the same thing. Just because I support public safety doesn't mean I have to go do everything the sheriff wants to do. I'm an elected official to protect the public. So I support the police. I support public safety. I don't support the rioting that's going on in the United States. That doesn't mean that I have to go and give money to sheriff's departments that don't need it, can't justify it, and have already wasted what they, they had in defiance of the county commissioners and in defiance of budgeting principles that this county has been using for a long time. Sheriff never should have given that money on his own. He took it on himself, decided what the amounts were that he was gonna give his favorite employees. And then, Charlie, you had the gall to come in here and ask for raises for yourself at the last meeting. So this thing looks to me like it's all about you and people getting more money. That's what's going on here.
We got, who within the county got COLA increases last year, other than the commissioners?
Talking about COLA increases, Charlie? We're talking about outside the budget increases, where you came at the last meeting and asked for a raise for yourself and several other employees. Now, every time I turn around, the sheriff's department is wanting more and more money, and that's not what it's about. We can't keep doing what we're doing, because as, as Commissioner Waters said, in order to have given you the $300,000 that you needed in round numbers, we would have had to raise the budget. You had, you had five positions that have not been filled for a while, and so we decided the best deal that we would cut would be we would freeze the positions, and the positions are unbudgeted.
So in last month's meeting, when I came and made a presentation, the board voted against the presentation for the last three pay increases of a series of the entire office. You get, I mean, just from your, from your own reasoning here, that if we didn't need it and it's asking for too much, then obviously the board would have discussed that and then voted against what the sheriff sent over here as our request.
Where's your data based on police calls to justify the need for more deputies? It's as simple as that.
We, we run more calls, and I can get you the information. You didn't ask for it beforehand. I can't just magic it. We run more calls, we help EMS more, we do more transports, and we have the same amount of help on the road. You know, we, we have put more, more deputies and more personnel into other positions, more into the schools. We increased the size of the drug unit several years back. We've added investigators. We've added support staff in, in the front office. We've added positions in the jail. All of those things were necessary at the time. We still haven't covered all of our needs. We're still not asking to cover all of our needs. That could be something that I can bring to you in the next budget, and I will. I won't hold back. I'll bring you everything and, and show you all the justification that goes along with that. But that'll be in the next budget discussion. We've done what we've been asked to do. We're doing everything that we can to, to serve the citizens of Beaufort County better every day. We try our best to give world-class law enforcement services at a discount rate, and I believe that we do that. The mere fact that commissioners are running, and commissioners who are running in an election do not have to talk about crime rates, do not have to talk about how bad things are, that is because of the partnership between the sheriff's office and the commissioners and getting people out there to do their jobs, but it's because the sheriff's office is doing the job. We're not dealing with the situations that they're having to deal with in Greenville every day. We're not dealing with the situations that they're having to deal with in New Bern and Havlock every day. We're not dealing with the situations that they're having to deal in Grantsboro or Williamson or in rural areas of Hyde County. And it's not just by accident, it's because of the partnership that we have as the sheriff's office to commissioners and the people in the public who allow us all to do our jobs.
Charlie, you need to keep in mind that in my duties and job in my other life, I get all over the county. I see a lot of what goes on with county employees, including the sheriff's office. So I have a little more information than the average Joe.
Commissioner Langley.
Okay. Let me, let me say this. Last year in the budget process, there was a push to defund the five positions, and I was one of the people said, no, I will not vote to defund, but I will vote to freeze until next year's budget. And my mind has not changed from that position. I'm holding fast to that, that I, I will not change my mind until the next budget process. Now, when you said that you had to move money from the sheriff's budget to cover a project in the jail, I have to throw this rock at you, but at the sheriff's department. We had a jail approved. We were moving forward, and during that time, no one from the sheriff's department stood up alongside the commissioners who had approved that facility and said, yes, you are completely right. And so therefore, we're back where we are now with the jail committee and trying to find out if in fact it's actually needed, when it was needed, when it was first approved. So do not say that we want to defund the sheriff's department. The agreement was made, and I'm just holding to it.
If I may on that. The, and my, my memory may be incorrect on this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the day that Sheriff Coleman was sworn in as sheriff was the day that, that there was a commissioners meeting. And the first two acts that were done by that commission was to choose chairman and vice chairman, and the second thing that that board did was to eliminate and cut and kill the jail. The sheriff had been sheriff for nine hours and had not spoken to the board actively until that time. Sheriff Jordan was the sheriff, that was sheriff when the discussions were made and the decisions was made, and I worked for Sheriff Jordan for 10 years. And if anybody can say that he wasn't an advocate for a new jail and worked alongside with every committee up until that point, once again, I will, I will flat out tell you, and I will eat all the crow I can and say I was wrong, but I don't think I'm wrong.
And it, let me, let me say this. In, in, in response to that, yes, yes, Sheriff Jordan was, was very, very active. We had lots of conversation. But what I am saying to you is, during the election process, the current sheriff, sheriff never said, yes, we need this new facility. He never once said that. That is, that is what I am speaking to.
I understand your statement.
Commissioner Rivers.
Well, I like to be, be known as the most honest commissioner there is in Beaufort County. And, uh, it gets me in trouble sometimes, 'cause I call it like a sled. And if, what you heard here tonight, and I'm glad the media's still here, what you heard here tonight was a bunch of junk. And commissioners, when I say something that's incorrect, say, Ed, you lie. Please do that. Please, I ask you. We allocated 14 SRO officers. Six must be with, unsealed, or longer. Is that correct?
Yeah.
We also, and I talked to Chief Rose, and him and I have never had a misunderstanding, but until tonight, I'm questioning where he gets this information. 'Cause him and I had a conversation. I said, chief, I will promise you, I will never interfere with your budget. When we allocate money, that's your money. When we allocate money, that's your money. Am I correct, Chief?
That's what you said, sir.
And have I stood to that? Don't answer. Lose your badge. And when we went down, when, when they took this money that we allocated for children, SRO officers, since you wanted to put the children in it and gave raises, I made that decision in, and I was the one that tried to cut those five positions. Not only did we cut the five, and he said, I can do with them five positions, and we had had them on a 10-car rotation, correct nothing wrong, is that correct? When we done 10-car rotation annually, he cut how many of those? Three. I can make it work. I won't come back. And I find it disturbing that one of my colleagues sit across the aisle, that just got here and will tell us how we pick on the sheriff. We have never picked on the sheriff, not one time. I will never, he is elected just like I am, and I will not sell myself for a vote. And let me tell you something, Chief, I'm not up for reelection this time, but if I get beat for telling the truth, so be it.
Uh, this will be my last go. I think we've about beat this thing to death. Uh, let me remind you that what the sheriff ran on when he ran for office eight years ago, six years ago. He ran on, I will use whatever jail the commissioners provide me. That's what he ran on, 'cause I was there. No question about that. Coleman has sent us a letter, which is, is later on in this process, which I think is relevant to what we're doing, parts of it, and the whole letter's in the record here. He says, I believe that at this point, the commissioners have no intentions or the competency to connect the years of neglect and intentional abandonment of the Beaufort County Detention Center. That is an outright lie. We just finished remodeling it. Go down. I invite the press, we will let you go through the jail and see what it looks like. It is not like what it is being represented at all.
But in your, in your own words, against your own colleagues.
I believe I have the, I, I have the floor. You can answer when I finish. And then the last sentence in this is equally insulting. It says, um, I honestly believe that from this point on, the only way I will be able to protect my employees, the inmates, the people of Beaufort County, and be able to comply with the constitutional and statutory responsibilities of the Office of Sheriff in dealing with the county commissioners on this and any other matters is through the courts. Charlie, when you come in here on your hands and knees begging for money and your sheriff is writing this kind of crap, how do you expect to get anything? The truth is on the table. He has misused funds, he has misspent funds, he's in here begging for money because he wants something that he is, quite frankly, I'm not voting for it. Now, enough is enough. It's been two years since the sheriff has come before this board personally. If he doesn't have the guts to walk in that door and make a presentation to this board, he does not need to be sheriff. Oh my goodness, he was hiding outside. Come into the podium, Mr. Sheriff, and defend yourself. I hope they're picking this up because what I've been speaking is the truth. Why were you sneaking around outside? Why won't you come before this board and make a presentation?
Just.
No, it's cowardly is what it is. It's a sourly. It's cowardly.
To answer to some of your statements.
It's cowardly.
Not on my hands and knees, not begging, going through the mechanics of the way that the rules, protocols, and procedures of county government works. Answering the questions that the commissioners have with professionalism and as much respect, more respect than is what is given. If you feel that you can call me a liar and produce what I've lied about, you wouldn't know the truth if Jesus Christ himself walked in and tapped you on the shoulder. And that is, that's just how it is. I know that the conversations between you and I, but that's sort of how the conversations with commissioners go lately. But once again, I put before you, if I'm a liar, then it should be documented. Everything that we do is in public. Can go back and show and bring it out before the media where I've lied about anything that I've talked about.
Charlie, we've asked for records from your office, and you won't produce them. It's a sealed, closed system. Don't start that mess about putting everything out in public. The Beaufort Observer has asked repeatedly, and we can't get information from you, so we quit asking.
Is there a motion? Is anybody?
We don't need a motion. We have no action.
I'm just asking, is there a motion? Hearing none, we move on. My apologies, I closed my computer. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is the financial report update that we give on a monthly basis. Again, a finance officer's out on medical, so I'm covering that. Um, I think Melissa's going to pull it up for me. Melissa, are you able to? There we go. Okay, so we'll start off with the water fund. Um, as you recall, Executive Order 124142, which was the waiver of penalties, interest, and disconnect, ended on July 29th of 2020. Um, the executive order that came after that requires a six-month payment plan for usage during the executive order period. Um, so for South Side accounts, you remember this before, we sent out certified letters to 220 delinquent accounts during the week of August the 3rd. 29 accounts initially signed up for a payment plan. Over 143 accounts were automatically enrolled in a payment plan because if they didn't sign up for one, we were obligated by the executive order to, to put them in a payment plan, which meant they had six months to pay it off. We took what their balance was, divided it by six, and said, here's your payment plan. 189 of those accounts were disconnected due to failure to pay or comply with the payment plan. So they either didn't pay or they failed to comply with the payment plan. The executive order allowed us to disconnect those. We did that. After that occurred, folks came back in, got on the payment plan, or made, or made the bill payment. Six of those remain disconnected of the 189. So the majority of those folks came in, and, and I asked the finance folks that question, well, if, did they either pay the entire amount off or did they get back on the payment plan? And they said, some of them paid the entire amount off, and some of them got back on the payment plan. We're required to let them have a payment plan, so that's where we are. So there are only six that remain disconnected as of today. Moving to the North Side accounts, there were certified letters that were sent to 538 delinquent accounts. 60 of those accounts initially signed up for a payment plan, and 357 accounts were automatically put in the payment plan. 396 accounts were disconnected due to failure to pay or comply, and as of today, 65 of those remain disconnected because they didn't pay or comply with the payment plan. And that was as of today. My anticipation is, they just had cut off last week, I believe. So my anticipation is that number's going to drop down because folks are going to come back and say, okay, I'll get on the payment plan. Yes, sir.
When you say, on, when you, cut your off.
Oh, yeah.
When you say on the payment plan, you know, some of them, you know, during this crisis, that's the part that we put on the payment plan.
The, the time period that they were under executive order, we're required to give them six months to pay that amount off.
Now, when that six months ended, they went back to their regular pay plan. So are they, are they paying their agreed money plus their, their current bill?
The way I, and, and make sure I'm getting this right, and make sure I think I'm right on this. People that had outstanding balances before the executive order started, once the executive order hit, we were not allowed to disconnect people or turn, or disconnect them for that previous amount.
Yes, sir.
Once we went through the executive period into July, the executive order said, okay, during the six months that we had the executive order in place, or during that timeframe we had the executive order in place, you have to take that amount that they were charged and give them six months to pay it off.
Okay.
The stuff previous to that, if they don't pay, they already do that, you can cut them off.
Okay.
So does that answer the question?
How about the current month? The month we're in now? Well, it's always a month behind, a trailing month. The reason I ask, there was only a six-month pay plan. That expired.
No, 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 six-month pay plan is still in place.
It's still in place, but, I mean, the, the pay plan is in place, but Fours couldn't cut their utilities and stuff off.
Right.
It expired at the end of that six months. So they're paying their current bill plus their pay plan. That was my question.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
And, and if they don't, if they don't comply with the payment plan, or if they don't pay what they currently have, there's no longer an executive, the executive order says that if you don't comply with the payment plan, you can be turned off. So, um, so that's, yes, sir. Oh, you just wait. Okay. Um, so now on to sales tax distributions. Been some conversation tonight already about sales tax distributions. Um, and what I'll say to you is just a reminder, what you're getting ready to see is July sales, August collections, and October distributions. Remember, we're always three months behind because if you're, if you're someone who collects sales tax, you charge it in one month, you collect it and send it to the state in the next month. The state does all their magic with it and divvies it up, and we get it in the third month. So we're always three months delayed. That's why we asked you, when COVID hit, let us freeze positions, current positions, let them, bring them back to you to fill if you needed to. But our concern was, we had estimated some sales tax, and we just didn't know what was going to happen, and we're three months delayed, so we wanted to have some time to look at that. The October distributions, which are the July sales statewide, it was $355 million in statewide distributions. There was a 10% increase statewide compared to last year, and it's the second month in a row that we've had an increase following three months of statewide decline. Now, that's statewide, that's not necessarily Beaufort County. These reflect July sales, and when, and, and that's when the state was fully in Phase Two reopening, having transitioned in May. So we were back open, uh, as much as the, as, as much as the governor's orders allowed areas to be back open, uh, under those restrictions. September distributions, the June, the June sales, which was last month, was up 11% statewide, and that was what we anticipate was likely due to stimulus checks and CARES Act spending. Year over year, according to the association, um, sales tax increase between October 18 and October 19 was 15%. So year over year, it was up 15%. Um, again, I'm, I'm not sure why that is. 15% is a lot, uh, but it is what it is. Statewide unemployment rate was 6.5 in August, which was down from 8.5 in July, and it was compared to 3.8 in August of last year. So unemployment's coming down, it's not where we were, obviously, uh, but it is getting better. Statewide, uh, statewide unemployment rate was as high as 13% in both April and May. So you're seeing some betterment in unemployment, so that should, that's probably adding to that. So these are the, this is the graph that we get from the Association of County Commissioners. And, and I apologize, I can, I think I can read, um, I, I made that pretty large, um, but in general, um, in, in general, it shows the, the last, it starts 2015 and runs through 2020. The reason I show you this is to see that year over year, we, we see, this is statewide, you see an increase in sales tax collections. So if you start at the bottom, the green, uh, that was 16. If you go up one, um, that was 17, 18, 19, 20. They're, they're up. Every year, you get a little more of an increase in sales tax. You know, inflation, people are spending more money, whatever it is. And you see that they generally are tracking the same, you know, generally. Um, you can see where you have events that occur, like the recession, where things turned down a little bit, and then you can see later where things pop back up. So that's on a statewide basis. The, well, these are hard ones for you to see, I'm sorry. This is, this is last year and this year of our sales tax tracking spreadsheet. I've got that spreadsheet that runs back to FY 1415, is what we talk about. But this year, this, this, um, um, this month on our distribution, we received, um, 973, I think that says 973,000 dollars in sales tax. That is, again, high, it's, it's not as high as we were last month, we got over $1 million last month, but it's still higher than what we got all of last year. So the sales tax numbers are up. Again, you pay me to be pessimistic and, and to be a little bit scared about these things, and I'm, and, and I am. We're still cautiously optimistic that these things are not going to crash. Um, so I show you, that is the Beaufort County, same tracking that the state shows statewide, and I plugged in our numbers. So you can see where December sales, that's why in March, we get December sales. And if you look generally, year over year, our sales tax numbers go up generally. Maybe bigger in some years, maybe not so big in others. But you'll see it, and it typically peaks in, in December sales. Then you move on, and, and what I'm watching, what you're looking there is at the green line, okay? The green line is current, that's, that's, that's 2020. And you'll see mid-March executive order, we were above $900,000 for June distributions, which was March sales. And mid-March is when the executive order hit that shut things down. You'll see that thing turn down, okay? And then in May, you see it turn back up. That's where you see the September collection or distributions, that was in May, when the, when the executive order was lifted. So there, it's turning back up, it's turning a little bit back down, but in general, it's above where we were. That's my hope that, um, we're going to settle out of this thing okay. Again, I don't know, we've still got a couple of months to go before we get to December. But if our numbers continue to show that, like we talked about at budget, we're going to come back to you in January and recommend to you that you take away the hiring freeze and let positions be filled, and then we want to talk about the pay study. But we want to make sure that those numbers continue to track the same way. We've just got to be cautious about it. We, we're not, we don't want to get ourselves in trouble and have to come back and, and riff people or, or do things like that. So, um, again, I, I'm the one who is, is, the budget officer and I, or the finance officer and I are, you know, we're not always the naysayers, but, but we're looking at things, and we want to make sure that we're right before we go and pull that trigger. So, um, so that's where that, that's where that is. Any questions I can answer for you? Uh, she'll be back in another week or so, uh, two weeks, she may be working some half days, um, but I believe it's, I believe it's within the next two weeks, she'll be back for medical. Commissioner Waters.
Brian, do you, do you remember when the state changed and started charging sales tax on certain services? I mean, that's, that's been recent.
It, 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 it has.
It's been that long? I would think it was maybe two years.
I'd have to look. I, I know there were some, there were some changes, and there was, um, there was a federal, um, um, court case where they were looking at, because I think Amazon brought, um, suit, or some company out in Washington that brought suit that said, you can't, um, you can't do what you're doing. Um, and North Carolina was watching that case. I know the association was watching that case very closely, and they settled in favor of saying, yes, you can, you can require remote sales. And, uh, so that, that, that legislation that North Carolina had with the agreement moved forward, so, um, but, but we are seeing that increase, so there is some increase in that.
But it.
The problem is, we don't get, we don't get the minute details of that. All we get is a check each month, and we have to graph it and look at it and kind of guess and anticipate and look around and say, what's the topic?
It still doesn't answer why it's up over the previous year because it's been in effect for three years, I guess is the point I was trying to come to.
A lot of people shop in Greenville, and they don't, didn't shop in Greenville during that.
Yeah, I, I think there's some degree to that. I know that back during, back during the recession, um, I, I know that when I was in Granville County, we had a tremendous amount of our folks go to Raleigh-Durham to shop. And, and our sales tax actually went up when I was in Granville County during the recession. And I was convinced the same way, is people were staying close to home. They weren't going to Raleigh and Durham and spending, they were staying close to home, so it does change a little bit of that.
Walmart, yeah, Walmart, and, and those were both full of people, a lot more traffic than what you, you.
And, and I think folks, folks are spending money.
Now, I think it relates to large ticket items, uh, boat sales in Beaufort County are probably up considerably.
And that's what's scary to, to me is that maybe there is a windfall, and folks are spending on big ticket items like that, but eventually there'll be a day of reckoning on that.
You all know about the first of the year, the election, they're all alone though.
Right. Right. So, any, any other questions I can answer for you on that? Thank you. Um, the next item I have for you is the NC DOT petition for, for road addition, and I'll go ahead and apologize right now to the folks who live in Magnolia Shore subdivision because in my agenda item it says Magnolia Shoes subdivision. because in my agenda item, it says Magnolia Shoes subdivision. So anybody who reads that, I apologize for them profusely. But this is a petition that DOT has sent over to add Justin Drive in the Magnolia Shore subdivision to the state maintained secondary road system. You have in the package, the petition form SR1, the resolution form SR2, and the subdivision map. When DOT agrees to accept a road onto the state system, they sent it to the county commissioners for your approval. And we would certainly recommend that you approve them taking that on. So moved. Discussion? Okay, Brian. This, the next item is the Veteran Services Officer Recruitment. Karen Melton, who is the currently the Beaufort County Veteran Service Officer, has announced her retirement effective December 1. And that is a single person department. As you all well know, veteran service officers are trained and are credited by the VA or other recognized organizations to provide assistance to veterans, their dependents, and survivors. And they do a multiple list of things. My request is for the board to allow me to go ahead and start advertising for that position so that we can be in a position to fill it when she retires because that's not something we want to have vacant. Veterans can go to Greenville and, and meet with another officer. But we'd like to be able to go ahead and start advertising for that and be prepared to have a few. Thank you.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Hold those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. Okay, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the next item is the Request for Proposals, an RFP for broadband expansion and fund balance commitment. Um, as you are very, as you, as you all understand, and you've heard previously tonight from the superintendent as well, the board commissioned and received a report on broadband deficiencies previous this year and what is needed to serve underserved and unserved areas in Beaufort County. Provisional broadband, I think most folks now will, will agree that it is viewed as a utility, just like water, sewer, electric, gas. It is a utility that is needed. The provisional broadband service helps increase economic development, educational opportunities, and especially in rural eastern North Carolina healthcare delivery. There's a lot of telemedicine that goes on. And the General Assembly has recognized that in order to make the business case for private telecommunications providers to help construct broadband in rural areas, they've put in place General Statute 153A, 34960, which allows counties to provide grants to unaffiliated qualified private providers of high-speed internet access service, as that term is defined in the General Statute, for the purpose of expanding service to unserved areas for economic development in the county. Now, according to that statute, and it's, it's really clear, in fact, the, the last line in that statute, and you'll see that on page 273, is, nothing in this section authorizes the county to provide high-speed internet broadband service. This is not an opportunity for the county to get into the internet business. That is not what we want to do. What we want to do is help encourage, which through the statute the General Assembly put in place, encourage private providers to come do that, to help them make the business case that they will put it in areas that are unserved or underserved in Beaufort County. So what you have enclosed is a, is an RFP, a Request for Proposals in accordance with the statute, that seeks proposals from qualified providers to submit a proposal to, to, to Beaufort County government to expand broadband services in the county. They'll be evaluated and a recommendation to partner with a provider will be brought to the board at a future meeting. I, I hope you've had an opportunity to look through that RFP. It's based off of a RFP that was, that was led in Stokes County. It is re, it is, um, again, language out of that says that it has to be open, it has to be technology neutral basis, and it has to be open to qualified applicants. So if that means somebody wants to do wireless, you can't say this has to be this specific type of technology. It has to be technology neutral. So whatever you bring to the table, if it works and can provide that area, it's got to be evaluated. You got to choose which one you think is best. So out of that, this RFP is what we call a best value solicitation. It's not necessarily who has the lowest price, but you look at the factors that we talk about. The, the added availability, potential number of unserved, underserved customers is 35%. The overall dollar investment by the provider, we're, we're asking providers to give us a proposal that says we're going to provide this amount of money as our side of it to put that infrastructure in. Yeah, we're going to give you a grant. The county's going to give you a grant. But we want to know, what are you going to do? And the higher the percentage that they say, well, okay, maybe we'll, we'll give you, you know, 50/50. You, you put in a dollar, we put in a dollar. So that helps do that. Technical performance, providers having a local presence and adding local jobs and facilities as part of the network, the vendor stability and experiences and past performances. Because what you don't want is some fly-by-night organization coming in who has, doesn't have a track record of doing it. And then what are the additional impacts for economic development? So that's listed out in, in how you evaluate the proposals. The next thing that I'm asking you to do, not only is to release the RFP for us to put out there. And, and, and again, the RFP is structured in a way that says, if the board says, once you get the RFPs back, we don't want to do it, then that's tough. We're not going to do it. And anybody who spent money filling out the RFP and doing that, they're on notice right now to say, the board has the ability to reject any and all proposals and stop what they're doing, and you have no recourse. So they can't come back to you and say, oh, you owe me $10,000 for putting all this stuff together. We're asking them to provide an RFP and potentially be evaluated and, and selected. So the last thing I'm asking you to do as part of this in releasing the RFP is also to commit. And it's, it's, we're not setting it aside in a project fund yet. But what we're asking you to do is commit fund balance. Now, that's a specific term in the budget or, in, in the budget world. You're saying you're committing those funds. So you're setting them aside in the fund balance that you'll spend it for that, that particular item. Sir? I am. That, that is exactly what it is. That, that half a million dollars that we're asking you to commit to make a grant, to, to get providers to come in and do this. Well, you already made whole. That is fund balance, that $500,000 is fund balance that's been generated by CARES Act money. No, we, we've already taken our CARES Act. Let me circle back around on that. We've taken our reimbursement on CARES Act money and put it toward a real easy, simple reimbursement. Public safety salaries. The U.S. Treasury said you can take that money and apply it to, to reimburse your public safety salaries. We've done that so that it's a real clean and easy reimbursement from federal government so that we don't have auditors down here coming through our books. If we show the salaries, they say, that's great. In fact, when we had the conversation with the NC Pandemic Office, they said, our auditors will love you because that is, that's a clean reimbursement. That then creates fund balance for you. Again, what we believe is that although it's fund balance and you could spend it on anything, generally, we think you ought to spend it in the manner in which it was proposed. And CARES Act money can be spent on broadband expansion.
So, so what was safety salaries, kind of like a stand-in? Or you spend it on something that's more.
No, what, what we've done is, we, we have to show the Pandemic Relief Office that we've spent that money in accordance with Treasury standards. Treasury standards say you can reimburse your public safety people for their salaries during that period of time, March to, to the end of December. So that's what we're going to do. Because it's easy for us to run a payroll and say, here's our payroll, and here's how much money. And they, and, and we actually have higher payroll than what you're giving us. So we've covered every bit of that. And it's a clean reimbursement. That then, when it comes in, it creates fund balance for the board to say, okay, now we're going to use that money to do projects that are, that we think are, that you ought to do public safety related, that are in the realm of what COVID is, COVID CARES Act funding was, would be for. It's just, it's not as difficult to go through all the paperwork then. Because if, if you were, it's just a clean reimbursement that way. Does that make sense? Sir?
Motion to approve.
I'll be quiet. Thank you. Second.
Any discussion? Hold those in favor, raise your right hand. Hold as opposed, 6-1, motion passes.
Uh, the last item I have for you is the 2019 Safety Awards from the North Carolina Department of Labor for county departments. Just wanted to recognize our staff and our departments for their hard work. You'll see an email from Jennifer Banks, our risk manager, regarding the safety awards. The Health Department is first-year gold certificate. Social Services is the first-year silver certificate. And the Administrative Offices is the fourth year consecutive for a gold certificate. So just want to recognize the folks in those departments, our risk manager for her efforts in, in, in trying to help keep folks safe. And appreciate all the hard work they do and the hard work of our departments in maintaining their safety. Because what we want to make sure of is that people go home the same way they came to work. We don't want folks not to go home, and we want folks to go home whole when they go home. So I appreciate the opportunity just to, for that, that item for information and, and to say thank you to those folks.
We're down to Commissioner Rebboltz for Public Services.
We had the opportunity to meet with Joe from Republic Services, I don't know, about three weeks ago, to talk about two different things. But what came out of that meeting was some information I wasn't aware of. And that's that we have in the contract with Republic Services that anything that goes, anything over 3,468 loads per year or hauls, our fees go up dramatically. And every year in the past three years, we've gone over. And we're almost over already this year. And in that conversation, Joe made the point that, that the number that they used was based on sort of somebody's best guess. And he suggests that we renegotiate the contract to get rid of that number.
Can I ask a question? Doesn't tonnage come into play in this, the number of loads?
You have tonnage, uh, tonnage offset? I mean, that's the way to do it because this stuff can be kind of fluffy. I mean, you know, you can make a half a load and call it a load. So.
Commissioner? Commissioner Waters?
I, I prepared a handout, and each one of you's got it. And it breaks down the load summary charges that John is talking about. It's on the first page, and it's right in the middle, middle of the page. Uh, what, the contract calls for 3,468 loads. If it goes over that number, then we have to pay extra. And in '18, uh, it was 284 loads. So we had to write a check for $56,000. In '19, it was 242. So it actually went down. And we had to write a check for $47,000. But based on the numbers from January through August, if you annualize those numbers, we're really going to go over in 2020. And that number would be 1,182 ballpark. And times 198 would be 234,000. You know, changing the contract, I, you know, if you're going to pay for a load, then you got a minimum. And I don't know that you're going to accomplish anything when it, when it's tied to loads, I guess is.
Well, that's why I say tonnage, we ought to look at tonnage. That would incentivize them to put more weight on the truck and do a better job of truck loadings because truck loadings can vary all over the place. And in the trucking industry, in the hauling industry, everybody figures their cost based on a ton mile. So, you know, if you're hauling 12 tons up there when you could get 15 or 18 tons on it with a little bit of extra work, that ma, that makes a big difference. So when we, when we change, when we negotiate the change, we need to work tons into it. And that's probably our safety valve.
One of the things I noticed in the proposal on the, on the stuff that, all the waste, the construction, is that they started looking at giving us a rate for the location that they were moving. So the 198 was the highest, and they had two other tiers. So that would be the only advantage, John, of going and renegotiating the cost, you know, per haul.
Well, again, I go back to them loading the truck efficiently and, and see that those rates are adjusted based on location. Goes back to ton miles if you follow it back because that's what everybody in the industry does. It's, it's, it's a ton mile. So if he's calling 12 tons up there, and he could have loaded the truck with 18 tons, you know, if they do a sloppy job of loading, then this, this gets to be a deal. And I've got quite a bit of experience with this.
So the point is that we asked Christina and... Yes, Christina?
Commissioner Richardson, I do not disagree with you at all regarding the, the tons per mile and that type of thing. But there are a lot of other things that go into the, the amount that they're able to load because you have to, it's... When you're talking the tons per truck, you use the term truck, that would only be from the transfer station to the landfill in Bertie County. Where the part that Commissioner Waters and Commissioner Rebboltz are talking is the in-county transfer. So when you're actually talking about the containers, when you're talking about the tonnage hauling the, exactly, hauling the containers, so that's where we're having issues. You cannot compact it. And then also, you, you come, you have, well, actually, you can compact a lot of it because that's why we want to push people to put as much as you can into the compactor. We want to get away from putting things in the bulk containers and put it in the compactor. But actually, Commissioner Rebboltz, I personally think it is a good idea to go back and to look at perhaps renegotiating or clarifying some of the language that is in Republic's contract. Manager Allie Good and I, we have sat down with Joe and Chris each of those times that they presented that invoice to us because some of the language that is in the contract needs to be clarified, in our opinion. Uh, Manager Allie Good, myself, and David read it one way. Republic Services reads it another way. So there is a little bit of disagreement in the way some of the language reads. What we, what the conversations that I've had with Joe, even after the meeting that you had, we have now been working together for three years. We have three years of good data for all of the convenience sites and for the different types of waste. They, for the past three years, we've got the tonnage for MSW recycling vegetative. So now we can actually look at the amount of waste from each of the collection sites, and we can look at trends. And now we have the information to go back and to renegotiate or to rewrite the, the contract.
And the good news was that they sounded like they were formidable to that.
They are because, it's because they think that, um, well, the contract holds them to a certain amount. And there's some language in the contract dealing with storm debris. And what's, what is the definition of storm debris? And that's what is not exactly very clear. So if there's a named storm, then we calculate it one way. If there's not a named storm, then it's calculated another way. For the past two years, there have been named storms, and FEMA has come in and reimbursed us. So we've been able to get some funding back to help cover some of those costs. So we've been able to get some funding back to help cover some of those costs. But again, again, we have the data that we're able to go back and look at. So I think that we can come back, for no other reason, so that we're able to go back and to forecast what the annual cost of our solid waste program will be.
So are you in motion to do anything? Or are you?
In motion to renegotiate, I think.
One of the other things that I didn't know until I went in there and started digging on the contract is we have an in-county transfer station charge, a minimum tonnage of 17, 1,720 a month. If you multiply that times 12, that tonnage is 20,640. That's a minimum. And last year in 19, our total tons was 16,514. So we, we had to ante up for 4,000 tons and that came to 124,000. Now, I don't know whether Christina, they enforce that and we actually paid it or not, but that's in the contract.
Six years from now.
Yeah, I think they're six or seven years from that contract.
But we definitely need to type, go back and negotiate.
So the motion is that we ask Christina and the county administration to review the contract with Republic and renegotiate it to clarify a number of different issues and solve problems with the fixed numbers.
Yeah. And we can do that. We've talked about that. I just will, I will give you the background too, that Republic has as much information or more information than we have. They know exactly how much they're hauling. They know exactly where it's going and, and they'll know that when we have those, I mean, there was a minimum for a reason for them to cover that. And then, so they're, they're being excited about renegotiating says to me, they know more than, than, than we may know and it may end up costing us more money. But there, but there are some things that need to be clarified, like the storm debris. We argue about that every year. What, what we say to them is, yes, we agree that if there is additional tonnage related specifically to that storm debris, then we ought to pay for it because you couldn't anticipate it. Well, the language talks about a named storm. Well, there could have been a named storm within 300 miles of Beaufort County, didn't touch at all. But they want to claim those extra charges and make us pay for them. Like, no, 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 that didn't work. So, so there is some things that need to be cleared up.
Well, can storm debris be called to white boats?
Well, it depends upon how, how bad the event is. You know, when it's a really, really bad event, we bring in FEMA and we have a contractor who goes down the road and picks up all the storm debris. So you've got, you've got home debris and those kind of things. And then you've got vegetative debris. So when it's a normal hurricane, when I say normal, a non huge damaging hurricane where you're not tearing up a lot of houses, you still have a lot of vegetative debris. Well, everybody, and sometimes there's enough vegetative debris for us to go pick it up and get FEMA to pay for it. But the problem is even when we do that, people get, get antsy and they're like, well, I'm going to get rid of it myself. And they go carry it to the transfer station. And then our number go out the roof. And what we said to Republic is, well, then set a container aside and tell everybody, if you're bringing storm related vegetative debris, put it in that container so we can track it. And we, we've been successful not doing that, but looking at baselines from prior years when we didn't have a hurricane and showing what the increase was. Because I will tell you that when there's a hurricane that comes, hurricanes heading our way, people clean their garages out. They clean their stuff out and they throw stuff away left and right. Now, I don't know why they come back and throw it away again the next year because there's a ton of stuff that gets thrown away and it happens every year. So I don't know where it's all coming from. But, but, but there's a lot of it and, and we got to be able to figure out a way to, to manage that, so.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, seven zero. Motion passes.
The next item is a discussion about the South Side centralized site. Currently at Hawkins Beach, we have a set of scales so we can handle vegetative debris there. If we decided to take construction stuff, we got scales where we could weigh a trailer and we could charge them, you know, some fee for doing that. On the South Side, you know, now we're hauling vegetative stuff. We pick it up in Aurora, Buck Jones and Chacoanity. We haul it through Washington, Dan 264, all the way to Hawkins Beach. And there's no weight, but we're paying $198 a ton. And then we're also paying the in-county transfer fee of $34 a ton. So total cost for the three sites in Chacoanity is $59,000 a year, just hauling limbs from those three sites. What, what I think we should do is start planning and thinking about having a central site on the South Side of the river that we can eventually someday in our budget process, we can put in a set of scales. But in the interim, we can stop the transfer, hauling this stuff and go ahead and get it to a site that's big enough that we can accumulate it like we do at Hawkins Beach. We bring in a chipper and we start chipping the stuff. So that, you know, the taxpayer, the citizens that want to get rid of the, the vegetative would bring it to this site. And what I would visualize is that's where, what also eventually could be where the compactor is and the other. I mean, it'd be a big enough site you could do all that. But thinking long-term, we can't really address this bulk stuff until we have a site on the South Side like we've got at Hawkins Beach. And if I remember correctly, the contract expires in November, thereabouts, on the Hawkins Beach with David's, to where the county could take that site and do something like this, where you weigh and you pay. So I guess my recommendation would be for us to continue to discuss it and look at some possible site as a long-term strategy.
Commissioner Waters, I don't have a problem with your suggestion as a long-term, long-range plan. I think it's a good idea. We should consider the, the location, when we do the location on this, this will be the only set of scales on the South Side of the river that could possibly be available for the public. And we should consider if people want to weigh grain trucks or rock trucks or log trucks or whatever, we should consider whenever we do this, for a fee, allowing them to come through, weigh them and collect some money off of it. You're going to have an operator there anyway. It's going to be a low volume of business, so that, you know, and for a long-term planning, I don't have a problem with it.
But the point I'm making is right now, we're spending 59,000 hauling limbs, you know, that we could, if we had a site, we could pile it up and we could chip it. And if, and if you separate it just right, there is, you know, there is some revenue that might be generated or at least we could get the chipper in there at night.
Black dollar price of the eight dollars a truckload.
Yeah. Right. But I mean, it's, it's ridiculous for us to be hauling that from the South Side all the way through and all the way down to Hawkins Beach, when it's going to be chipped when it gets there. And as you well know, when you have a truckload of limbs, you don't get very many tons on there.
Commissioner Waters, as we go through that process, we'd have to make sure also that, that it was centrally located as possible on the South Side as well as not in the flood plain because the state requires that, that those kind of areas not be in there. We would have to have it certified by the state so we could take vegetative debris there and get reimbursed from FEMA. If it's not, we would, we will make sure of that, so.
Okay, Commissioner Waters?
Well, my motion would be for us to, to proceed in the planning process and looking at it, I mean, and hopefully be able to address it in our next budget process.
That would be beneficial for us as well as we could tell the public you've taken that step. Thank you.
I'll second that. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, six zero.
The next item is the county website design and web hosting. Our current contract on that expires on February 23rd. And I'd like to make a motion to ask our staff to start the request for proposal process for web design and web hosting.
Is there a motion?
Second.
First of all, be exact, we didn't really enter, finish, get the contract to a point that it, well, actually, we don't even have a signed contract between us. But we have an agreement and the agreement really started at the end of April. That's when the first monies were paid. And it's paid every year, May 1st for the year, all the way around. That's why, that's where the discount comes from. So really the contract would run, that we're doing now, should we, you say contract, agreement, whatever, it runs through April. Okay. Secondly, I, I don't think I should vote on this.
Well, let, let me clarify something. You provide the service now.
Yes.
Okay.
I provide the service. And I have no, I would also like to say, I have no problems with this. I think it's, it could be an avenue where we find out what the commissioners want, what the county wants. I mean, they've been happy with, with the way the set site is so far. They haven't wanted to change anything. This way we get to find out what everybody wants to do and I intend to bid on it as well.
I think under conflict, you, you could vote on this, the motion that's on.
Well, I would vote, I would vote to go ahead with it.
Yeah.
But, 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 but I mean, I, I don't want it to be perceived as a conflict.
I mean, we're not actually voting on the contract.
None, none.
And, and just for clarity, I'm sure everybody knows this, but just for other folks' clarity, Commissioner Deathridge was not a sitting county commissioner. When we put the original request for proposals out and his company bid on it and, or presented a proposal, it wasn't a bid, it was more of a proposal. We asked for a request for proposals. So he is, only when he became elected did, did it become a city commissioner. So, and general statutes allow that to occur in a municipal, in a county where you have a municipality that's not over 15,000 people. Just the statute to allow that and do not consider it a conflict interest. If, just, and, and long-term down the road, if you had a sitting commissioner who, under that exception, started doing business with the county through a process, you can't just award it. It has to be a special award by the board through a special resolution so that it's very, very clear. So I just want to make that clear to you as well.
I mean.
Any more discussion with your buddy?
Wait, wait, hold, hold. Let's, let's be specific. The, the period would run, still run through April. You're going to need, you're going to need to have some time to, to get words put together as to what you actually want. I mean, there needs to be some really stringent specifications to be sent out to everybody. And therefore, if you, if you specify what you want, really put some time in it, you'll get a better, better product. I can provide a better product if I know what you want. I can give you anything you want. We write our own code. Very few people do that. So we will give you exactly what you want. Somebody else, if they're really good, could do the same thing. So take the time to specify exactly what you want. Don't, don't bring people in and say, look at this, what do you think? No, you tell people what you want and you'll get what you, what you need at that point. You'll get a better, you'll get a better functioning site and you'll get it cheaper. I promise you that.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, six zero.
Okay, I'm going to make this short and sweet. I think the manager sent us a report, which I thought was a very good report based on progress we made in the past. I'm kind of excited about finding something that seems like people in Florida have gone to work on this. And the woman is, that's doing the work, seems like she's right into it. So maybe we'll get something worth reporting shortly. And that's all I have. That's all I have.
Commissioner Richardson, letter from Sheriff Coleman.
Well, you know, we beat the sheriff around enough. I believe he deserved it. But this letter alarms me in light of another letter that.
That's funny.
Oh, Tom.
Hi, thank you.
This letter alarms me in light of another letter that we had where the chief judge is keeping control of the jail situation, which is totally unjustified because our jail is in compliance with the state law and he says it's not in his order. And then when you see the sheriff behaving in this letter like he is, so I'll read the letter. It'll take about 40 seconds and we'll call that it unless somebody wants to get into it. This is a letter of September the 18th, 2020 to Brian Alli Good and the Beaufort County Commissioners from Sheriff Ernie Coleman, reference Jail Committee. Brian, I thank you for the invitation. However, after much discussion and consultation, I have decided that the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office will not participate. And this is participating in the jail committee's activities, giving information and, and just being a, doing your normal civic duty as an elected official. Looking at the discussion points for the committee, I believe we can agree that the county has had in the past and, and has now, in the present, the answers to these questions. I believe the commissioners have appointed this committee under advice from counsel only after the court has again become involved. Well, I think he was in there nudging the court. I believe that at this point, the commissioners have no intentions or the competency to correct the years of neglect, well, there is no neglect down there now, and intentional abandonment of the Beaufort County Detention Center. That's an untruth. I honestly believe that from this point on, the only way I will be able to protect my employees, inmates, the people of Beaufort County, and be able to comply with the constitutional and statutory responsibilities of the office of sheriff in dealing with county commissioners on this and other matters is through the courts. Basically, what the sheriff has said is, I'm going to sue you. That's what this comes down to. So maybe at the next meeting, we need to talk about how we're going to defend ourselves, get with our counsel in a closed session and see what we do to protect ourselves and the people of Beaufort County from a frivolous suit from the sheriff. In the past, the sheriff's taken it on himself to use county money to sue people with and to sue us with. We stopped that. So notice to the sheriff, if you bring a lawsuit, get ready to dig in your own pocket unless you're sure you're going to win it. Because Whalen Sermons will not be hearing the suit. It will be another judge from another locale.
I have one question to begin. Is there any headway been made searching for grants? I'm going to ask that each and every time, each month. Just tell me no, if there's been none, maybe next month we will get another report where there's been a little bit done. This is going to be a long-term process. It's going to take a while. I've said it before, there's going to be a lot of moving parts. It's going to be a big picture fix and it's going to take more than just probably Beaufort County to do it. So if, if, if you know anything, tell me now and then I'll go on to my second part. And Frankie, you, you, you brought up a motion last month that the state of North Carolina be advised through the legislative, yeah, goals that we might be searching along with others for solution. Is there anything come of that yet or has that happened, not happened yet? Or has that happened in January?
That goes to a long process.
A long process, okay.
In January.
It is January. Is anybody going to go there? Because we still have COVID in January.
The, the grants were all done in probably about March of this year. And they won't come back up again until next year.
Grants for?
For recycling efforts. And the grants that the state has allows for grants to refurbish or to, to improve sites. And also there's a grant that if you work with other municipalities or counties.
Counties.
To do a regional type thing.
Yeah.
But there's not, there's not enough money in those things to do anything.
Yeah, that's kind of what we're looking for. But I'm thinking there's going to be some federal money at some point.
There, well, the federal money was coming through the state.
Okay.
So you won't get any of that?
Well, we're just starting the process now, so.
So Commissioner Deathridge, also, it's my understanding from, from Christina that several years ago, Republic was worked with the North Carolina Department of Waste Management to try to cite a regional recycling facility somewhere in eastern North Carolina. And my understanding was they did a lot of research, did a lot of work, did a lot of study and trying to figure out, was there enough volume to be able to support one of those? And ultimately it came down to, no, there's not.
No.
So what, what we've got to do, first of all, I think, is get a copy of that study and see if anything's changed. It's my understanding the state was looking for that opportunity as well and they were hoping Republic would do it. And Republic is a big recycler across the United States, but they just didn't have the volume to do it. So I, I guess going back and getting a copy of that study and then relooking at it to see, have those parameters changed is, is probably the first step in that. But there are grant opportunities, but there's just not a lot there.
I, like I said, it's a, it's a, it's going to be a big puzzle. And there's, there's some other things that have changed since that period. So there's other ways that materials are being recycled. I'm not clear on all of it. I won't study it a bit and factor that in. My daughter, Meredith Deathridge Lachlan, is a big. to that end. My daughter, Meredith Deathridge Lachlan, is a big into the recycling, limiting the use of plastic, all that good stuff. And she wants to go take some field trips with me. And we were, we were talking about going to Wilson County, Pitt County, and Dare County and see what they're doing. They're doing some novel things. She explained it to me. I think I need to see it for myself. If I go, I will make a report back to the board, complete with pictures and other things. But there, if we go, I will file a travel report. I will not stay overnight. Okay? Does that sound all right? Get approval for that? Okay. It's gonna be cheap, and it'll probably be the only travel I do next year. Okay. That's it for, for recycle. I'll, I'll bring it up again next month, and we'll talk, or maybe I won't. The resolution. Okay, I'm gonna have to, I might, I think I might pull that resolution. I'm gonna tell you why. Well, I'm explaining it first. What has hap, a lot has happened. We had to get this in by, by Monday, right? Monday, the end of business day. And all this came down, I became aware of it over the weekend. And so I wrote a resolution. What happened was, the Attorney General of North Carolina entered into an agreement with the State Board of Elections while advising them to go along with a specious lawsuit, a very small lawsuit in a lower court. And, and by doing that, he completely advocated his responsibility to the General Statute 1169, HB 1169, here in North Carolina. And it was wrong. It seemed very complicated what the problem was. But the, the solution was easy. It was an easy fix. All you had to do was follow the law. So what has happened in the last week since I wrote this resolution, and I was very eager to ask this board to represent the voters of Beaufort County, and, and form, and maybe enter into a lawsuit ourselves as an injunctive practice to stop what they were trying to do, which was to favor a very small entity over the voters of North Carolina when we already had state law in place, which is the only way in North Carolina you can operate an election. Well, there's two ways. There's the state law, and there's the Constitution. Those are the only two ways to operate an election in North Carolina. The State Board of Elections does not get to decide how it is done. That's clearly just the way it is. They can, they can put in practices to, to enact the law, but they can't omit different parts of the law, even if a, a judge says they can at a lower level. Because the first thing your Attorney General's gonna do is go to an appellate court and, and get an injunction and say, no, we're gonna follow state law. He did not do that. And the reason he did it was apparent, and it upset me because I, I don't think we should have an Attorney General doing that, and the governor was kind of in, in on it. And what happened in the last week or so is the General Assembly, the President pro temp, Phil Berger, and the Speaker of the House, Tim Moore, came together. And I don't, it, I've read where they're representing themselves as individual citizens of North Carolina, and they're representing their parts of the legislature for us all. Either way, they're representing us all. And basically, they've gone to court, and within 24 hours, an injunctive process was enacted, and, and it didn't take long. Judge said, hey, it stopped. You're gonna follow the law. And I talked to Kelly Hopkins today, our supervisor at the Board of Elections. She says it's pretty much gone back to the way it was when they were gonna follow the law, except for they're not clear on a few issues, one being the drop-off point. How are they gonna handle the drop-offs across North Carolina? Now, having said all of this, there's still about 30 lawsuits involved. And the Attorney General, I think, has been served a notice, you're gonna have to follow the law, or at least represent the people of North Carolina, whether you want to or not. I don't know if he's gonna do it. But what's gonna happen is, people are gonna, are already setting up processes to go and, and join in lawsuits in the federal courts. I mean, quite frankly, we got state law on our side of, of doing what's right and for the voting population, our citizens. We've got the Constitution of North Carolina, Constitution of the United States, and you got a federal elections law. And all these need to be followed. We don't need to stop just because some appointed board or elected politicians decide unilaterally to stop it. So I was all in arms, and I'm glad, I wanted something to be done by this board. I don't feel that that really needs to be done at this point. I think we've got the process enacted in North Carolina, and I'm, I'm very happy that the federal courts have, have at least stopped part of it. Now, we're, you know, I may be wrong. It may not, it may not completely work out like it should. But right now, it looks like it's on the right path. So I'm gonna pull this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move with adjourned.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Well, I'm glad you were there.